The Leominster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarulous Insurance Agency at www.decarulousinsuranceagency.com.
We have an interview at 5:55. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the appointment of Nicholas Prevell to Board of Appeals, alternate member, term to expire 4/15/2022. And I understand, Mr. Prevell, you're on the line?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, am I pronouncing your last name correctly?
Uh, Prevell. Usually say, rhymes with Cadillac, Deville, kind of helps people remember.
Oh, okay, that's easy to remember then. All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
That's my problem.
All right, Mr. Prevell, so we'll be here this evening for a quick interview before the City Council and any of the public that are listening in, so people can get to know you.
Definitely.
And also to find out what your commitment and contributions could be to the Board of Appeals. And so I don't have a resume on you, so if you could give us a little bit of your background, that would be very, very helpful.
Sure.
And then, you know, like, as I said, just, you know, indicate, you know, what your interest is in the Board of Appeals and what in your background would make you a good candidate for this position.
Definitely. I apologize, I was trying to get a resume over, but I'm wait, I was waiting on Pittsburgh State with regard to my degree, so I want to provide you guys with accurate information, but I'd definitely give you a snapshot right now.
That's fine.
Yeah, so, I mean, I was born and raised in Leominster. My father's a retired firefighter, my grandfather retired, well, he was the police captain. And I have a degree in business management from Pittsburgh State with a concentration, yeah, with a concentration in management. And while I was there, I took some political science classes, including, I took Business Law I and United States Government, so that, you know, I have a little bit of experience, you know, taking that class, looking over legal documents, you know, not that I'm an expert or a lawyer or anything, but I did get some, you know, just general experience from that. And I'm a property owner, I bought a house in 2018 in Leominster. I just, I heard that there was a vacant position, and I love to read, I'm already 120, yeah, 120 pages through the Leominster zoning ordinance with like 20 pages left. So I just, I like to read, I like to analyze, I just think the opportunity came up and I just, I said, I'll, you know, definitely be interested in it.
Okay. And the Board of Appeals in particular would be something that you would be interested in? I mean, that's, you know, it's, you know, kind of lack, this effort for people to get permission to get things done in the city, and so is this something that you feel as though you would be capable of serving on?
Yeah, definitely. I think, you know, I think, you know, going through the ordinance and everything like that, you know, there's a process and there's different, there's different avenues. I know if you make an appeal, you know, it could be done to the, you know, with the council, you know, the board, and then the zoning Board of Appeals, but, you know, I do think that it would, you know, I do think I'd be, you know, capable and, you know, I think I would be good for the committee.
For the committee. And what is your occupation, Mr. Prevell?
I work full-time landscaping, and then I also started my own business on the side, so I worked for my dad, I've been working for him for, since I was a little kid.
Yep.
But I, you know, where it would, could relate is in the private sector with my own business, I had restripped the parking lot, they were originally, to exit the parking lot, they'd have to back out onto a state highway, which obviously for, you know, safety reasons is not, you know, they kind of get grandfather dinner, whatever. But I was able to redo the lines to incorporate a horseshoe design, so they were able to, you know, become compliant with all the, you know, so I have, I have a little bit of experience with, you know, people being out of compliance with, you know, zoning and then becoming compliant.
People being out of compliance and then having to be in compliance, that's the difference, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, okay, well, very, very good. So, and I kind of jumped into it because we were running a little bit late, but I just want to let you know that this is, the Ways and Means Committee is tasked on interviewing candidates' appointments that the mayor sends down. So, Gail Feckley, the Chair of Ways and Means, and the other members of Ways and Means, there are Councilor Claire Frida and Councilor John Dombrowski. So I'm going to hand you over to Councilor Frida for any questions or comments that she might have.
Awesome.
Hey, Mr. Prevell, how you doing?
Not bad, yourself?
Not bad. You certainly come from a family that had a lot of service in the community, so seems like a natural progression that you're looking to do the same. I gotta tell you, anybody that read 120 pages so far of a draft zoning document shows that he wants to be on this board. I mean, the zoning board is a board of non-terminated uses, so they're, you know, it's, they're pretty, it's a pretty important position to be in.
Yeah.
They, they're usually contentious, and, you know, you've got to make the, make the right judgment. There are pretty easy rules to follow, you know, on hardships and issues that are applied for, so it's, the fact that you're reading and learning now is just a real plus. So, you know, I'm happy to see you come forward, and I look forward to supporting you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Dombrowski, do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Prevell?
I don't have any questions, but I've known Nick for a few years now, and there's no surprise to me that he's already read 120 pages of the zoning ordinance. He's a very hardworking guy and a very dependable person, and I think a very analytical person. I think he's going to be a solid addition to that board. So congratulations, Nick, and thank you very much for submitting your name.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Any other councilors have any questions or comments for Mr. Prevell?
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Well, right ahead, Councilor Cormier.
Thank you. Nick, I just want to say, and I want to say to the members of the council that I'm very fortunate to count Nick as a, as a member of my Ward Two community. He has made himself a home here, he's upgraded the property that he's bought, he is a great neighbor to have, he's reached out to members of the community, he's somebody that I can call in an emergency, and I know that others in the neighborhood have relied on him. Nick is very smart, very analytical, and I want to say thank you as well, Nick, and I think he's going to be a great member of the Board of Appeals.
I thank you for that, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Councilor Cormier. Any other councilors? All right, Mr. Prevell, it seems like several members of the council are familiar with you, and that your dutiful reading of the ordinances has shown through for you this evening. So I would be very pleased to recommend your appointment later on when we get to the matter on the agenda. And thank you very much for joining us.
Adam Saff?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's all right, I was just gonna say, maybe we ought to have Nick come back when he finishes the zoning.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll give him a test. Yeah, we'll give him a quiz. All right. Mr. Prevell, thank you very much for joining us this evening virtually, and hopefully very soon we'll be able to meet you in person. And have a good evening.
You too, now.
Okay, our next interview is with Lori Nelson. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the appointment of Lori Nelson to the Cultural Commission, term to expire April 15, 2024. And I did hear that Ms. Nelson was on the line.
Yes, I am.
Hi, Ms. Nelson.
Good evening.
Good evening to you. And you were on the line for Mr. Prevell's interview, so you know what we're going to be doing here.
Yeah.
I do have a copy of your resume, and I do see that you are quite involved with the arts, and certainly that's, you know, an integral part of the Cultural Commission. We've interviewed and appointed a few other members within the past few months, and it's good to know that people are interested in serving on this commission, because certainly after what we've been going through the past year, once we, you know, we're breaking out hopefully now, and once we break out and the weather gets better and all that, people are really going to be interested in some art and some culture and some music, and it's going to be very important within the city. So we appreciate that you're volunteering, and if you could just give us a little bit of your background and how you feel you would be able to contribute to the commission.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me on. I'm a seasoned professional, I'm an artist and a poet, and I grew up in central Massachusetts in Holden, and I've lived all over the country, gone to school, I graduated from Anna Maria College, and here I am in Leominster, and I love it. And during this particular time in our history, I just think it's really important for us not to forget the arts. And we have such an amazing diverse community in Leominster. I would love to tap into that diversity and just honor the people that live here, so many different cultures and languages, and it's just wonderful, I love it. And if I can sort of do a little analogy, you know, Johnny Appleseed country, and I would love to be the watering can, you know, for spreading the seeds and having the diversity grow here in town. I've been a municipal employee, I've dedicated my life to service, most recently I was working at a retirement community in Worcester, and I was the recreational specialist doing all the programs. And that's pretty much what my whole career has been about. So when this opportunity, you know, came about, I said, this is exactly the type of thing that I'd love to do. I have a lot of ideas. The other thing that I would love to see happen, by the way, your Park and Recs Department doing awesome job would be floral planting. Oh my gosh, they were beautiful this summer. But there's a lot of vacant buildings now because of COVID and the pandemic, and I was thinking it would be really neat if we could, as a community, maybe do something interesting in those vacant windows, you know, to actually utilize some of this property that's not being used, and use it for the arts. And to promote, you know, it's kind of like a goodwill thing, I think children, old people, and everybody in between, you know, it's a, it's an identity, it's like our culture, it, our humanity depends on it, and, you know, I'm passionate about what I do. And I would love to be considered, to be on the board on the Cultural Commission, and yeah, so that's kind of it in a nutshell, you know.
Well, I have to say that your passion does ring through, I hear it loudly. I think that if you contacted the mayor's office with your ideas, that they could be of assistance with some of those plans. And I also think that if you were put in contact with the right people in this, in this certain diverse community of ours, you would receive a lot of interest. And especially, like I said, as we're coming out now of kind of some really dull times, I can see that, you know, there's a lot, would be a lot of, of culture that just needs to bloom, you know, very, very quickly.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and it seems, so you're the kind of person that would have that, as you said, passion and energy to do that. So I'm really pleased, you know, with what you said here this evening. And so what I'm going to do now is I'm going to have you speak with Councilor Frida.
Okay. Hi, Lori.
Hi.
Thanks for coming in. You really, I'll agree with the Chair, your passion just showed right through, I noticed on it, and I think that's something that's pretty necessary. I mean, you clearly sound like an artist and someone, someone who loves the arts and music, and that's important in this committee, and I think we've got, we've got some good commissioners that really exhibit that, that same kind of passion. So I think, you know, you get some great ideas, and there are a lot of, lot of clubs and a lot of organizations in the city that could probably help you with some of these ideas, and there's a lot of grants available, and hopefully, you know, there's more grants from the State, State Commission on Arts and Culture. So I thank you for offering your time and your expertise and your excitement, and wish you well.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be in this community. I really am enthusiastic about it, and I think I could bring a lot to the table, and I'm just very happy to be part of the community, so thank you.
Right, you're welcome.
Okay. Okay, Councilor Dombrowski, any comments or questions for Ms. Nelson?
No, I just want to thank Ms. Nelson for volunteering. She has a great background and a lot of passion, and I think that the timing probably couldn't be better. I just want to wish her the best of luck and thank her again.
Oh, thank you. Any other councilors? Okay, Ms. Nelson, thank you very, very much for coming here this evening. I think you're going to be a wonderful addition to the Cultural Commission, and I'd be pleased to recommend your appointment when we get to that matter on the agenda later on this evening, and would be looking very much forward to seeing how some of your ideas come to fruition. So thank you again for meeting us virtually. Hopefully, again, we'll be able to meet you in person at some point, and have a very nice evening.
I look forward to that, and thank you one and all. Talk to you later. Bye-bye.
Okay. Bye-bye. Mr. President, we're all set with the interview.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilor Feckley, and we'll now turn it over to the Chairman of Legal Affairs for C56.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a continued public hearing on Communication 56. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that the City Council submit a request pursuant to Article II, Section 8, Paragraph 1, Clause 1 of the Amendments of the Constitution as amended by Article 89, that State Senator John Cronin and State Representative Natalie Higgins file special legislation with the General Court on behalf of the city, seeking to exempt the positions of Police Chief and Police Captain from the Civil Service Law, General Law, Chapter 31, as follows. An act exempting the positions of Police Chief and Police Captain in the City of Leominster from the Civil Service Law, being enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and General Court assembled, and by the authority of the same. Chief and Police Captain in the City of Leominster shall be exempt in Chapter 31 of the General Law, Section 2. This act shall take effect upon its passage. Before I get into the substance of the, of the public hearing, if I could just inquire who's online that would like to address the council regarding Communication 56?
Hi, Dean. Um, Mr. Mayor?
I'm on, I'm here. The dean and Attorney Mazer, Attorney Mazer is on as well. The chief is on. Chief, you want to introduce everybody that's on there from Public Safety, Law Enforcement?
Yes, this is Aaron King, the acting chief of the police department, I'm with Lieutenant John Frayer, and Sergeant Pretty is also online.
And good evening, Kareem Morgan, on behalf of the Leominster Superior Officers Union, Local 2 E2.
Okay, well, whoever you think is best, is best qualified, why don't you give us a quick summary of what you're intending to do, and why you're intending to do it, and why the civil service feels outdated and no longer beneficial?
So, Councilor, this is Dean, I'll start off and then just give you a little background. We started negotiating with the Superior Offices some time ago. As you know, we've had an acting chief, and then he retired, Goldman, and then, and then we appointed another acting chief. And, you know, certainly civil service has its benefits and its merits, but especially now with police reform, and by the way, we have an excellent police department, and it's very diverse, it's very compassionate, the things you hear around, you know, different places in the country, certainly is not a reflection on our police department. And so we spent almost, maybe over a year, just going through the different scenarios and on, you know, what our police departments would look like. And I think we all agreed, I think we all agreed that, you know, the civil service system in terms of high-level management or upper management, Police Chief and Captain, would be appropriate to remove from civil service, and, but it's just a question of how we did that. And so we spent a lot of time with our attorney, the attorney for the union, and in good spirit too. I mean, it's just good debate and conversation about mostly what's best for the city. And, and so, at the end of the day, we were able to come to agreement, and I think the union can touch on that tonight, we were able to come to agreement on it, and basically what it means is under the current system, you, you, you applied to civil service, you have a test, the person gets appointed by the mayor, subject to the council approval, and that person could come in at 30 years old, 35 years old, and retire at 65 years old, and, and without any, without, without any reappointment or evaluation. So we all agreed that that civil ser, that piece of civil service in the high-level management, and especially around the state, I mean, most police departments in gateway cities or big cities have gotten away from it, we agreed on this new system. So how it would work now is we were one of the first communities to do assessment centers, and some assessment centers are still, still under the police department, are still under the offices of civil service, and, and only what would happen is, under the assessment center version, what would happen is, you could do 100% assessment center, and assessment center is essentially evaluation and the test provided by your peers. So you're going to be a lieutenant or whatever, it would be probably other lieutenants from other departments around the state. Now, you could do a combination in assessment center, what you could do is you could hold a test, and some of it could be written, and some of it could be the actual assessment center. The written portion would be given by civil service, and you would, you would be given a pass, fail. Then you would go through this process of assessment center, being assessed by your peers basically, and they would give you a mark, and then the, the mark might be combined. We've kind of eliminated the written part of the test in agreement, and with fire departments a little bit different, some of it is written, some of it is assessment, but what we've done at the police department is 100% assessment center. And, and it's very thorough, I have to say, it's, it's no cakewalk. It's, it's, you're being evaluated by your peers that have done the job for many years, that have a lot of experience, and they have no connection to the, you know, to Leominster or the people that work here. And it's worked out very well. We were one of the first cities in the Commonwealth, four times, to go to an assessment center, and it's worked very well. So under the new, new, under the new, what we're, what we're proposing is, and what we've come to agreement with the union on, is, with, is that we would do 100% assessment for both Police Chief and the Captain's position. That would be, and, and we would be, we would remove it from civil service, have a private company come in and do the testing, city's hands-off, and, and they would again come back and grade, so to speak. Now, what's different is, under civil service, the mayor is the appointing authority, and it doesn't require a confirmation by the City Council. Under the new scenario, it would be, say, it could be, let's say, initially it could be a five-year appointment, because, you know, you get the chief up and running and the captain, and then after that, it's a three-year appointment, and that's subject to council approval. So it's a much better system, most communities have already gone with that, and that would be the same with, with the Captain's position as well. Now, in our scenario, we would probably hire the, the chief, and the chief might have some input in the final, you know, in civil service, you get to pick from the top three. We would want the chief to have some say, because these two people have to work together, whoever they might be. The other thing that we changed is, we will not be looking outside the state, we will be looking within the police department. And I can tell you with total certainty that when we made the last acting position, we put, we put a team together to interview for that position. I believe, and if I'm incorrect, Chief or John, correct me, but I think there were six applicants, five or six?
Five.
And at the, yeah, and at the end of the interviews, everyone was in agreement that if, if the other four or five that didn't get the acting position, didn't, didn't get a job ultimately in Leominster, any one of those other, other applicants could easily go and manage a police department anywhere in the state, or if not that, in the country. It was, it was, it was really enlightening and encouraging, and we got a chance to speak to them one-on-one, it was them, and, and no one else, and they got a chance to talk about their experiences here. And what's interesting about our police offices is, we're a mid-sized city, so in many police departments that are much bigger, you could be a lieutenant in the traffic bureau for 15 or 20 years. You could be in records department for 15 or 20 years. In the Leominster Police Department, every single one of our sergeants, lieutenants, acting chief, captain, every single one of those officers has had experience in every single department. Every single, so they all know what it's like to be part of the beat, a, a beat, a sector, or a ward, the patrol, they've been in the court, I mean, they've done every single component of police work in law enforcement, they've done it. And that's something that is very unusual. So we're all in agreement, and I can't stress enough, that we have talent above and beyond what anybody could find going anywhere. And I say that because I, I've looked, and I can come back and report to you tonight that we have all the talent for whoever is selected as a captain and a chief in the department. And, and it's, it's pretty impressive, because anytime anybody gets appointed, those that didn't get the position at that particular time come back to support the person that is. And it's really a special group of people, and I think now is the time to remove ourselves from civil service, to get back to the other system, which is to have it approved by the City Council, and to, again, we'll have to work on the appointment process, whether it be, the first appointment would be five years and then do three years after that, but I don't see a problem with it at all. I've checked with, I mean, anybody here, any councilor can call any police department in the state with a three-year or a five-year appointment and ask them if there's any problems at all between management, the council, the mayor, and you'll get a resounding absolutely no. And so we have worked really hard, extremely hard, and we worked together on it, we've had some, you know, setbacks with COVID in terms of negotiations, we started working out face-to-face, then we had to revert to Zoom and phone, that wasn't easy, you know that, and, but we've, I think, reached this final agreement, which is to remove ourselves from civil service, the chief and captain, and to go to an appointed positions, and to go with 100 the chief and captain, and to go to an appointed positions and to go with a hundred percent assessment centers.
Let me ask you, Mayor Mazarella, maybe this is a question more appropriate for the attorney, but if we were to adopt Communication Fifty-Six, where is that process codified? That this would be a position that would have to be, the appointment would have to be confirmed by the city council? Where exactly is that codified?
Well, it's not going to be under civil service anymore. And civil service is just, it's an appointment, appointed by the, under civil service, under the mayor and council not reproved. And so, under the eyes of civil service, the mayor or the city manager, or whatever it might be, is the appointing authority. And Attorney Mazer, if you want to explain that, that changes and it's similar, it becomes a department.
Good evening. Yeah.
Good evening, Attorney Mazer.
Can you hear me okay, Mr. Nebraska?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, thank you. I apologize. But to answer your question, sir, and just to touch upon it if I could briefly, what the mayor just stated is accurate. If you had a traditional appointment as a, you know, as a civil service chief, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be subject to the same confirmation vote that you would have as a normal, you know, department head outside of the, outside of the coverage of civil service. So, if you remove the chief from civil service and there's an appointment made to that position by charter, per the charter, that appointment really as a department head would be subject to council confirmation, you know, as set forth in the charter, which is different than what you currently have with the position still being covered by civil service. There's no requirement or that's not something that's subject to council vote right now. So, if you moved forward with the communication and put it in front of the general court, that would be a step in the process in the event that the special act is passed by the legislature.
And Attorney Mazer, what about the whole process of hiring or appointing a chief, going through these assessment centers? Is that something that's a written policy or somehow codified with the city of Lemmonster or is that just an idea or the proposal that we're contemplating right now?
Well, the procedure that was arrived at is really set forth in the memorandum of agreement that was signed between the city and the union and that, as I understand it from my conversations with union council, was endorsed overwhelmingly by the Superior Officers. So, that MOU really sets forth what the eligibility criteria would be. And then, what would happen is that when the city goes forward, assuming, you know, the council adopts the communication and it's put forth to the general court and it's passed, subsequent to all of those steps occurring, when the city commences the process to fill the chief's position, the city would go out to bid to secure a third-party, you know, a vendor who works in this space and does these assessment centers. And the city would enter into, you know, a vendor agreement with that, with that vendor, and that vendor would then conduct the assessment center. They have assessors on staff, whether they be full-time employees or people they contract with. Generally, they're former chiefs themselves or professionals, you know, in the field in which you're looking to fill the vacancy. That vendor would then conduct the assessment center, you know, schedule all the interviews, schedule the assessments. There would be in the contract itself kind of what, you know, the assessment center would involve. And then, from there, they would conduct the assessment center, rank the candidate, and then with those rankings, you would then, you know, move forward with determining additional scores based upon education and experience. You would compile a list of finalists. Those finalists would be then submitted to the mayor. The mayor would go through the vetting process with those finalists and then a finalist would be, or really, an individual would be selected to have the conditional offer of employment made to them. So, it's an involved process. It takes some time, but it's a very, very thorough process and it's designed to be in light of the fact that you're hiring, you know, the chief law enforcement officer, you know, within the city.
Now, also, Counselor Nebraska, in the memorandum of understanding, just so, you know, just for the sake of sort of touching on a few things the public can't see in that document tonight, is things like, in civil service, you would get credit or extra points for certain things like longevity and, you know, there are different things. That is also embedded in this agreement with civil service. So, those are the kinds of things that you see in the memorandum of agreement or very similar to what you would see, you know, the same kind of terms that civil service would have, only ours are things that were negotiated, that we negotiated back and forth. And again, we came out in a hundred percent agreement on all. It's a very, 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 and one of the things that we, both the management and the officers' union stressed was fairness. We don't want this to be political, we want this to be a fair process. And again, I think that when the nomination or the recommendations made from the mayor to the council, that you too will be in agreement that that person, whoever it may be, will be the best candidate and that the process was fair on all sides. And we've been using this assessment center, Counselor, I don't even know when we first started it, but I would say almost everybody that is an officer, is a superior officer in Lemmonster Police Department, has been promoted through that process. So, it has worked.
So, but the Attorney Mazer, so this process is part of the negotiated agreement with the Superior Officers Union? Is that accurate?
Well, the negotiated agreement really speaks to what the eligibility criteria are. For example, for your police captain's position, to be eligible, to be considered to be a captain, you have to have a minimum of fifteen years of full-time experience with the police department in Lemmonster, with at least five years of combined supervisory experience, serving as a permanent sergeant, lieutenant, or higher. And then, you have basic, you have educational experience, you know, points that you can also achieve based upon patrol officer experience, sergeant experience, and lieutenant's experience. For the position, also, there are additional points based upon a degree that you possess. You can get anywhere between one and three points additional depending upon your associate's, if you have an associate's degree or a master's degree. The chief of police, sir, again, it's an internal assessment center, you have to have a minimum of a bachelor's degree from an accredited college or university in criminal justice or a related field with a minimum of fifteen years of full-time experience within the department. I believe that it's only, it's only open for lieutenants, but that depends upon qualifications of existing lieutenants at the time that the, at the time that the vacancy presents itself. And then, the preference points, you know, are the same. So, really, the MOU speaks to what the eligibility criteria are going to be. It's, you want to have some flexibility when you do the assessment center because as we're seeing right now, in really in real time, the, you know, the world of policing, the landscape of policing can really, really change, you know, in a very short period of time, sometimes overnight. We've seen a lot of development, obviously, you know, since last May following the events in Minneapolis. You have the new law that was just signed by Governor Baker relative to police reform. There are a lot of internal requirements that are going to be placed within a department based upon police reform in the area of internal affairs and discipline records and public records and also really, you know, complete and total overhaul of policies. So, you know, those would be areas quite possibly that, you know, a future assessment center would really, really focus upon as compared to, say, a prior assessment center that wouldn't have even looked in those areas. So, the assessment center really is, that process and what that process really involves is something that is determined really at that point in time, based upon really, you know, the world of policing at that point in time and also, you know, the assessment company that the city ultimately would contract with.
I understand all that. I guess, I guess the point I'm having trouble with is, right now, civil service governs this process. So, if we get rid of civil service, what is in place? And when I say in place, I mean, something that isn't going to change unless the council changes it. Is there, what is, what is it that you're going to be basing the requirement of an assessment center on? Is there a written document? Is there a policy? I understand we've got this agreement with the union, but isn't that going to change the next time there's a negotiation?
Well, no, it's separating apart from their collective bargaining agreement, sir. So, it's a side letter of agreement. If there was a need, if there was a desire to change it, either side would have to, you know, approach the other and request a bargain. Now, that would be really a permissive request, it wouldn't have to be agreed to. This is, these are the eligibility criteria going forward. And if the city were to stay in civil service, civil service does assessment centers, their assessment center, you know, criteria, you know, can change, you know, just as much. Really, what this does is it allows the city to establish minimum eligibility criteria with its union that typically you wouldn't have if you remained a civil service department. Really, you might be able to establish some criteria, but really, anybody, you know, could seek to apply or, you know, regardless of qualifications. And then, really, the problem, or I guess, not necessarily a problem, but one of the reasons that people, or not people, I should say, but cities and towns that are under civil service, if they have police chiefs or higher command staff that are still governed by civil service, you really see, really, every year I'm dealing or approached with regard to, okay, we want to move forward with getting our command staff out of civil service so that we have more of an opportunity, you know, to really establish what those criteria are for those positions. And then, at the same time, you know, it, there's more of an opportunity in the event that you need to make some type of a change in those positions. Civil service is very restrictive in that regard. And then, at the same time, you know, when you do a simple test, you can continually see the same names over and over again. So, there's more flexibility in terms of who could be a candidate, but then, at the same time, the city has more flexibility in the event there's a need to make a change. Civil service law is really, really restrictive in that regard.
All right. But just to summarize, if we make, if we do make this change, essentially, the administration would be responsible for establishing the assessment centers, negotiating with the unions, basically establishing the hiring process, making the hire, and then, the council would be responsible for confirming or not confirming the appointment. I mean, is that a fair summary?
Yeah, I think that's fair. I mean, again, it's already, the city and the union have already negotiated with the eligibility criteria it is. So, the next step, again, would be, you know, the passage of the statute and then, the assessment center vendor would be retained. Based on, you know, discussions with the city and the union and the vendor, you would arrive at really what an assessment center would involve, who the assessors would be, when it would be conducted, what it would entail. And then, from there, you would arrive at scores, you would add those extra credit points based upon the MOU, you would arrive at a list of finalists, mayor conducts interviews, maybe there's an interview panel that's established based upon discussions with the union and the mayor. And then, you have a finalist that's made a conditional offer. You would have, that finalist would sign some type of an employment agreement with the city that would provide, you know, for benefits, you know, term, and also, you know, removal procedures if need be, and then, that would all be subject to council confirmation.
Okay. Now, my last, my last question, and then I'm going to give some others an opportunity. Let's say, let's say we do this and three or four years from now, we don't like it. How hard is it to get back to civil service? What's the process involved with that?
Well, you would essentially have to enact a special act, repealing the special act you adopted. And then, you would have to, you would have to go through the process of putting those two positions back under civil service.
All right. So, basically, reverse ourselves.
Correct.
Yeah, but you would also have to negotiate with the union as well. You'd have to negotiate with the union too, wouldn't you, Brian?
Oh, right. Oh, yes, of course. I mean, yeah, but I mean, that's certainly a condition precedent to repealing the act. But I mean, the special act you would adopt has the force of law, so the only way to overturn that would be to repeal it, but that would be really the last step in the process.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to give some other counselors an opportunity to ask questions. I'm going to go to legal affairs first and Counselor Shalafou Zephyr, you have any questions or comments?
I do, I do. Thank you, Counselor Nebraska. This is for Attorney Mazer. Do you know how many communities, you know, recently have done this, have changed the way that they hire the police chief and captain in their police department?
With respect to a specific number, no, but I know that the larger police departments have all, from my chair, you know, started to do this. I know that, I think recently, the city of Marlborough did. I think, I think, I think the city of Marlborough taking it on and going through with it was something that happened maybe, I want to say, maybe two, three years ago now. And their process, we looked at before we actually sat down with the unions and negotiated with them the last time we settled contracts. So, that's one example. I believe that, I think, as I sit here right now, I want to say, the city, I think the town of Lexington was another town that recently did it. I could be wrong on that. But by and large, what you're seeing, if it hasn't already been done, and a lot of towns that have civil service for their police and fire departments, they had enacted special legislation quite some time ago to exempt the command positions. I see it happening more and more frequently.
And this process covers really the police chief, but in terms of the assessment process, the screening process, and then coming to the city council for confirmation once the candidate has been selected, but does not really apply to the captain, is that right?
No, it would apply to both.
It would apply to both. So, the captain's position would also come be, but I thought you said that according to the charter, the reason that the police chief would come to the city council before the city council is because the city council confirms department head appointment per charter, per our charter.
Yes, I mean, that is the case, but I mean, at the same time, you know, now that just, now, because the position of captain would be removed from civil service, you know, traditionally and historically, if it's a civil service appointment, once the appointing authority makes the appointment and once that person, you know, passes through the probationary period, they have tenure. If you're removing the civil service component from the position, it would be, it would be a position that would still be submitted after the appointment's made, you know, to the council, you know, per the charter. I don't see that being any different.
Okay, I guess I'd like to confirm that. I do have another question. This is about the, and this is probably for the Superior Officers Association, and we have two letters as part of our package of materials on this item. One is September twenty-eighth, in which to summarize, the union was not in agreement with removing these positions, asked the city council to delay, take no further action on Communication C fifty-four at the time, and they hoped that they, and I'm quoting from the September twenty-eighth letter, it suggests that the bargaining process has not yet been exhausted. However, the bargaining committee reached out to the mayor to resume negotiations, and it goes on. So, then, we have a February ninth letter from the same, representing the same union and the, and I'll read from the letter, it says, quote, "The mayor resumed negotiations with the union, reached a subsequent agreement for the removal of the chief and captain's position from the civil service." reached a subsequent agreement for the removal of the chief and captain's position from the civil service, general law, chapter 31. In addition, the parties have reached a subsequent agreement with respect to the promotional criteria and appointment procedures for these two positions." So can somebody explain specifically what changed and what provisions were made that, that made the Superior Officers Union agree to this? I, I want to know what the specifics were.
Madam Counselor, Karim Morgan, I was the author of those two letters. I can, I guess I can speak to some of it. I may ask Sergeant Proled to weigh in if I miss anything. But my understanding is that if you see the initial letter from September 28th, where it states that when it went for a ratification vote before the union and, and was voted down, that there were some additional concerns that were raised by the union at that meeting that, you know, the union had hoped to readdress with the city and the mayor back at the table. My understanding is that that, that that happened, and that certainly is reflected in the memorandum of agreement. And to answer your question more directly, I think the concern had to do with the, the scope of the, of the search for, for the chief and the captain's position. So whereas back in September, the MOU was, or the memorandum of agreement permitted the city to, to do a broader search, to go outside the city of, of Lemonster to find a candidate for both positions. If you notice now, the memorandum of agreement requires that the assessment center for both captain and chief's position be from an internal candidate pool, which was a, which is, which was a major issue and major concern for the union. That was what we spent probably the majority of, of our, you know, energy on in negotiations, along with the promotional criteria. And, and again, you know, the proof is in the pudding. If you look at the, if you look at the executed memorandum of agreement, you'll see that, that both of those concerns, I think, have been addressed more, you know, more than sufficiently to the satisfaction of the union. Other than that, I'm not sure, Dan, were there other issues that were addressed?
Good evening, Dan Proled, President Superior Officers Union. What Mr. Morgan stated is true. There was a little bit of a hang up on the language with the union body. And we did go back to the table and leave with the city, and those were resolved. And that is what's reflected in the current MOU that the union did sign off on. So yes, that's correct.
And I just want to say, while, while I have the podium, so to speak, that, you know, I, I want to echo what the, what the mayor said and what Attorney Mazur said. I think everything they've said so far, I completely agree with. And from my own experience, I don't, I don't know too many departments where the chief is still in civil service. I mean, there are a number of them. I know that's one. But by and large, most towns operate with their chiefs and captains outside of civil service. And from what I can tell, the system works just fine. Again, I mean, that's not necessarily the union's concern, but we are confident in, in the system that was created in negotiations. I agree with the, with the mayor. And we spent a long time on this, over a year. Some of that delay had to do with the pandemic, but some of it was just, you know, all the work that we put into it. And the union's satisfied, and they're certainly, and I mean this in the best possible way, there's certainly no pushover, a group of pushovers. So if they're satisfied with it, then I know that it's good. And, and, you know, we're putting our full support behind it.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Sure. But I just, I want to ask if any of the counselors have any questions for me? I have to jump off now. I can, I can come back on in 20 minutes if we're still discussing it. But before I go, were there any, any other questions for me?
Anybody have any, any questions for the attorney for the union? I, I think you're safe to jump off. If you just want to check back, we'd appreciate that.
Yeah, Dan, I'll just text, you know what, I'll text you, Dan, in, in a few minutes. And, and I can jump back on if, if we're still at it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Counselor Zephyr, any, anything else?
No, I'm off set for now. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go to the third member.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
I, I apologize. Brian Mazur again. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr had just a question or was, was seeking confirmation relative to a discussion I had with her concerning council confirmation of the captain before Mr. Morgan jumped on and offered his comments.
Right.
And just looking, and looking at the charter and looking at section 2.3, where it talks about appointments subject to council confirmation. The wording and the language of the charter provides essentially that, you know, appointments are subject to council confirmation, where there's no other method of appointment or selection is provided by the charter or a general law. And if you're removing the captain from civil service, then they're not subject to the appointment procedures and they're that general law. So from my chair, that position would be subject to council confirmation.
Okay. So there's sort of a fallback provision.
Right.
Okay. All right. Let me go to the third member of legal affairs. Counselor Cormier, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this is, obviously, this, this position has been, you know, in civil service in the city of Lemonster for a very long time. As a matter of fact, if you look in, in, in the beginning of our ordinance book, beginning on page 19, it shows the very first special act of the legislature that, you know, the city ever, ever, ever voted on. And, you know, right up through today. And on page 27, it shows the chief of police, which was enacted on October 23rd, 1929, by the voters of the city of Lemonster. That's, that's how long we've been in civil service. So it's about 91 and a half years. But, you know, we've sort of battled this before, you know, in my time on the council. It's been 11 years now. And I, I, you know, I, I took this a little differently, you know, in, in, in the past when it was presented to us. But, you know, now I think it's, it's, it's a different animal because we just had this new police reform that, you know, as Attorney Mazur explained, has been signed into law by Governor Baker. And, you know, I, I, I think it changes the conversation a little bit. And, you know, my concern about taking out of civil service in the past was that, you know, we can, this position, these positions can become political. You know, you can maybe have somebody that can work their way into this position that, you know, is, is not, you know, looking out for the best interest of the city because it's just, it's a, it's a political position. And, and I think, you know, police reform has changed that. And I know that, you know, Attorney, I mean, I'm sorry, Officer Frere, he put together, you know, that package for us when we voted on money a couple of meetings ago. I know he's done a lot of the training stuff. And I'm just wondering if he knows or can explain how this new law is, is going to affect how things move forward when we're out of civil service, you know, that allows a police chief to do his job without having to worry about, you know, repercussions. You know, that's one of the things that happens now is the police chief works independently and, and, and sort of doesn't have to worry about repercussions, you know. And, and I think we want to maintain that, and that would be my concern. So can somebody explain how we can be assured that the police chief is going to be able to do his job after we get rid of civil service, the same way that they do it now, without politics involved, from not only this mayor, but any mayor in the future?
Well, first of all, I, I think the answer to that is to look around at departments where they've had problems with chiefs. They were mostly protected under civil service. And you didn't have to go very far down 495 to have picked up a situation where the town or the city, the city, similar sized community worked hard to try to get, you know, to remove a chief from a position, but couldn't. Yet, if you look around, there are very, and again, I, I was at plenty of meetings where I asked anybody, you know, raise your hand if you're having a problem and you're, and you're not civil service, if you're having a problem with the chief. And, and by and large, let's face it, I mean, it's still the, the function of the mayor to, to direct all the departments. So what you have is, and what we have here is, we, we work in teams, you know, we work as a team. And so, you know, things have changed. In fact, if you look at, if you look at a lot of the police reform around the country, this is, this is exactly what they're opposed to, is lifelong tenure, protected by something that's, you know, almost 80 years old, you know, the civil service process. So there are enough measures in place in, in the contract, you know, in, in every possible method to protect everybody. So, you know, the days of, of politics interfering with, with police work is anybody that is foolish enough to get involved in that sort of thing today in today's age is really, using court discretion, is just to find themselves in trouble. I mean, this is a 1942 law. It would operate completely different than, you know, than, than we would before. So again, you can check with other police departments, three or five year appointments, and you'll find there are no problems at all. In fact, the, in fact, what you'll find is more cooperation, more teamwork, better planning, all, all positive things. And that's why people have left civil service in droves. And the, the departments that haven't left it yet, especially under police reform, you'll, you'll, you'll be seeing them go towards removing, removing their police chiefs and, and captains or whatever from. I'm doing negotiations right now with a couple of police departments where they're removing the captain from the police, from civil service as well. So it's a better check than balance system. And I, I don't anticipate, I, I don't, it's not even a 1% concern about any of that. It's just not 1929 or 1942. It's, you know, it's not even 10 years ago. It's altogether.
No, I, I appreciate that. You know, and I was just wondering that, you know, to hear from, you know, the police chief as to, you know, how, how he administers, you know, the job under civil service. And, you know, as compared to this, if, if we go to this, you know, how, how does your, how do you see this to be different in the way you do your job every day?
Hi, it's Aaron Kennedy. I'm the acting chief for the last eight months now. I'm in a, a strong support of civil service back in the day. I've had the luxury of moving up in the rank, becoming the acting chief. I don't think there's going to be any difference in civil service or non-civil service. I totally understand the team approach. Mayor Mazur has been really good to us since I've taken over and how we started organizing our, my command staff. Recently, I had Mike Chukley become the acting captain because we needed it because of police reform. We've set out a game plan, how to attack, what we need to do to get ready, try to get ahead of basically everybody else because we want to be the one setting the standard, especially for this area. I think by having a, a good working partner as a captain, it's going to be Mike Chukley down the road or Marco Miko. We all have come to terms that we can all work together. It doesn't matter who's leading it or who's second. We don't think civil service, we, we believe, we are all in agreement that civil service has ran its course. And it's time for us to go a different direction than the direction that the mayor has laid out. I think is, once you come down and we look at it at all aspects, it's going to, it's going to work out beneficial for the department and the community, how we move forward with police reform. I, like I said again, there's going to be no difference how we run this department for civil service or not. People are going to do the job that's required of us. So I hope that explains it.
Okay. No, I'm, I'm, I'm good. I'm good. I'm good for now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cormier. Are there any other counselors that have any questions or comments at this time? Anybody? All right. I'll go to.
It's, uh, counselor, it's seven o'clock. So I think we're going to call the meeting to order. Is that? Take it, you're present, please?
I am present. Sorry.
Thank you. Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Also David Cormier.
Present.
I shall be recorded as president. All nine counselors are in attendance. And does the chairwoman of records have a report?
I do, Mr. President. I have the minutes of the regular city council meeting of February 22nd, 2021. And I find them to be in order and ask them to be placed on file.
Thank you very much, counselor. I will now entertain a motion to go into recess.
A motion. Counselor David Cormier.
By Counselor David Cormier. Do I have a second, please?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, I think, I heard. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are in recess by a vote of nine to zero. Counselor Dombrowski, you may continue with C56.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yes.
I, I do have some comments if you're.
Oh, okay.
It's a vocal feedback. So I'm getting, I'm getting a lot of feedback on my phone. I don't know.
I think I just, is that better, Counselor Fida?
All right. Sounds, sounds better. Thank you. I could barely understand anybody. Obviously, I've been, this is the third time, I think, that, um, this has come before me as a counselor. Now, this, that's again, Caitlin. For some reason, that, that, that's our noise is bad.
Check it right now. There you go.
Okay. Thank you. And I, I understand that it's becoming archaic. I don't disagree with that. I think a, a lot of the areas that we're talking about in towns, I think they were completely different than cities. I don't know that I'm totally opposed to coming out of exempting civil service. But I, I think there are a lot of questions that we have to answer before that even happens. I'm not comfortable with, with what appears to be, and maybe I've got this wrong, and, and Brian Mazur, hello, maybe you can clarify the negotiation. Is this clearly, from, from listening to the discussion, it's, it's like, I will, if we go out of civil service, I'll give you the captain. Is that how the captain's working into this negotiation? Or is there a captain in the negotiation regardless of whether this comes out of civil service or not?
It's, 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 there's going to be a captain whether it comes out of civil service or not because it's already a position that we haven't been able to fund because, well, because a, a lot of the funding, you know, a lot of the available funding that we have goes over to another bigger department in the city. So when it gets budget time, we get to that captain's position, we, we, we haven't been.
able to fund it. You know, there is another option, and the option is that whoever the mayor is under civil service can go to a statewide exam, and, um, it doesn't require a city council, uh, confirmation, and you get to go statewide, you know, whoever the mayor is has, has the authority to go statewide, and, um, that there's no guarantee that, you know, the next chief will be from the City of Lomester. I see no reason, there's not, in fact, there's every reason, um, to support the fact that the next chief should come from the Lomester Police Department, there's no reason at all why we shouldn't. But down the road, if I'm not here and there's somebody else there and they choose to go outside, they can just go outside, it doesn't even require, uh, council approval, and that's under the, and that's under civil service law. So there's almost no benefit. In fact, most cities across the, the, I don't, I don't even know a city that still has civil service that's a city, that's a city our size. Most, I, I can't even think of one, most of them have left that system, and the last one is out in Methuen, and I'm, I'm pretty sure they're gonna be running out of that-
Well, I, I think, I don't think that so, Methuen is even something that we should, that compares to anybody with, uh, I don't think I'd choose making four hundred thousand a year or whatever. Um-
Well, those things can happen, and there's just no good reason anymore in two, twenty-twenty-one to, to continue to use civil service when you have another system that both, uh, you know, administration and, uh, the police department and its ranking offices and the union all agree to. There's not, I, I don't see anything that's beneficial to it at all. Again, the flip side of it, you get both civil service, and it doesn't require confirmation at the city council, and you can pick anybody you want as long as they pass, and they get a higher mark, you can pick anybody you want from the state. So it doesn't even give an opportunity for somebody that's been there for all these years, uh, to become the chief of their department when they're certainly qualified. But that doesn't mean they're gonna top the test on the civil service.
I underst- I understand all that, but I think one of the issues in Methuen, and go back to that for a minute, is by, big part of the problem is the fact that the city council wasn't paying attention either, um, for that, that kind of salary to get through, um, and a lot of the questions that were asked. But regardless, we're not Methuen, but, um, I, I, I don't, I, I just have, um, I just got some real reservations. I, I just, I think we're moving too fast on this. I think, um, you know, I looked, I pulled out and, and nobody would even remember that it's there except you, Mayor, is, um, the study that we did in nineteen ninety-nine. Um, you know, I know a lot of it doesn't apply, but some of it does apply, and it, it's kind of interesting to look at that from twenty years ago, see what the recommendations were, um, see how we've progressed from there, some of the recommendations they made that have been done, that have worked well, some of the recommendations they made that we haven't done. Um, the past ten years, we've had three different chiefs in place, um, and none of that was civil service, aside of partially for, uh, Chief Healy, but we still haven't, and, and I understand you're talking about funding, um, but we didn't have a captain, you know, to help the chiefs in that position and to, to have a, a real plan in place. Um, I'd love to see another, another study done, to be honest. I mean, I think, I think now would probably be the perfect time, have a study done. Um, I, I had a conversation with Natalie Higgins, the Southland Representative Higgins, and didn't even realize that she's on the state, she's the vice chair of the State Commission on Civil Service, and they're gonna be looking at, at how to, how to correct civil service, uh, if there are any corrections to be made, uh, whether to eliminate it if it's not a good thing anymore. Um, and they're, they're getting ready to get started on their, on that commission. Um, maybe that's something we need to look at, maybe there's some changes that would help us. Um, police reform, we don't know how it's gonna affect the City of Lomester, we don't know how it's gonna affect, uh, the department. I mean, there's just so many different loose ends that we don't have the answers to, not because we can't come up with them, but because they're not available. And if, if all of this is working together, um, maybe, maybe if we put this off for a short time and looked at all these, um, all these options, the possibility of a study, uh, see how that state commission is gonna move forward on civil service, um, uh, conditions, and just look at, at some of the issues that we're dealing with. Um, you know, the, 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 and it, and it's just a question, it isn't, it isn't, uh, any other reason, but if there were, uh, when, I think it was Counselor Dombrowski that asked the question about reverting back in a couple of years, uh, that would also have to be going back into civil service would also, um, uh, Brian, it would, it would also be with mayor's approval, correct?
When you say going back into civil service with mayor's approval, uh, Counsel Fieda, what do you, what do you mean by that? I mean, would it have to be something that would have to be negotiated?
No, when Counsel Dombrowski asked you about if we didn't like it, if we came out of civil service-
Yeah.
-and wanted to go back in, um, in, in a few years, and you said it would be like a reversal, reversal of what we've done, would that require the mayor's approval to, to, uh, go back to the legislature?
Yeah, I mean, well, that would be initiated, uh, at the bargaining table, you know, with the parties that bargain, you know, those types of agreements, which would be-
Right.
-the unions and, and the mayor's office, yes.
Right, right, okay. All right, so I, I guess, you know, and even if it comes out of civil service now, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, or, or Attorney Major, um, if you have five years, uh, the chief is in for five years, then I think somewhere it was said that they have to come back to be reconfirmed for another five years? Is that correct?
No, some, some police departments, some police departments will give the opportunity for the first-time chief to be appointed for five years, so they get acclimated to the job, it takes a little longer than three years sometimes, and then after that-
Right.
-it's a three-year appoint. But they've been able to do it a couple of different ways. Uh, but I've, I've, I've been involved in other police departments where they've done it with a five-year appointment to start, and then after that, it's a, a three-year appointment.
But it's had a reconfirmation, uh, uh, from the city council on the second, second three years or five years?
Correct.
So what, what would prevent, I mean, would that be absolute? I mean, we have a lot of, a lot of positions now that haven't been reconfirmed, they're, they're holdovers, would that be a possibility with a chief as well? If you, if you felt necessary, would that, would that, would you have the ability to-
I think this is a pretty, I think our, our labor, I, I think our agreement with the union is, is pretty spelled out in terms of the haves and have-nots and the do's and the don'ts. I mean, that's, that's pretty spelled out. I mean, that's, that's not an issue. Um, if there was some sort of a problem with somebody, a legal problem, whatever, they might not get appointment, but I don't see it as a problem. It hasn't been a problem in other cities. In fact, it's, the system has worked much better, um, you know, than the civil service system. But I can tell you one thing, I, I mean, you, you may have your reservations, but going back for a study and waiting for the legislature, by, by the way, the legislature did not include public safety in, in police reform. And, and we're going back in time by not moving forward. I mean, we've come a long way to get to this point. Uh, there were times when e- even I wasn't for, you know, pulling, you know, uh, the chief and a, and a, and a captain out of civil service, but times have changed, police reform is here, our police department is well situated to get to that point. Um, we, we know we are, we want to be in front of that, we have a very diverse police department, uh, waiting for the legislature, waiting for the legislature to do something with civil service, waiting for another police study. This is just delaying progress in the, in the police department. We've, I think we're both coming to you tonight as a counsel. Now, you may vote against this, Counsel Fieda, and that's fine, that's your own, that's your prerogative, but we have made so much progress just to get to this point, be, when we can get in front of the council and say, the union and the administration are in agreement. That took a lot, that takes, that's the hardest part for most cities to get to that point where they can actually say, hey, we've worked out all the details there, we're comfortable with it, we just need your support to be able to get to the legislature for a home rule petition. And I think what we've said is, a collective, and I'll speak for everybody, is going back the other way, sticking with civil service, has more problems associated with it than anything. Again, any mayor doesn't even, just can go ahead and do a statewide exam, that takes opportunity, potential opportunity from somebody that's existing, that's spent their whole career in the Lomester Police Department and worked their way up the system, to have somebody else score so much higher because they're a best, better test taker in civil service under their rules. And, um, I just see it as a, a huge step back. I mean, I think, you know, we're here, it's twenty twenty-one, it's police reform, we have a very good police department, excellent police department, there's a lot of cross, uh, training that goes on there, there's lots of talent, our police department is generally involved, that there's training going on around the state, it's usually our police department and our offices that are assisting with the training, if not running the program in its entirety. Where, where, the, the one missing piece is this. And, and I would hope that the council tonight would, would find this favorable and see that. It's not too often that you, you get, you know, a union and a administration that come before the city council to make a change, a, a drastic change, that as Counselor Cormier said, you know, civil service has been around for ninety-one years, not an easy thing to do, but clearly, this is one, very, a big step in, we think, in the right direction. And again, not for us personally, but for our community.
Mayor, I don't disagree with mostly everything that you've said. I, I absolutely agree that we have an excellent police sta- police department, you know, working on the police station committee, I, I've, I've listened to a lot of them, they've got their heart and soul into, into the department and into their jobs, I mean, that's, that's very clear. Um, I don't disagree with any of it. What I, what I am concerned about is, is I, I can't get out of the feeling that, you know, the, the negotiation point was, was agreeing to the captain. Maybe that's a good thing or a bad thing, but for eleven years, we haven't had that captain, and they're definitely gonna need that captain, is this the only way they could get it? I mean, I guess that, that, you know, which is why I have a little bit of a reservation on the whole thing. Um, and again, I'm not saying that it isn't hard to say it-
Who told you that, 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 who told you that this was a condition of the captain's position?
I didn't, I just figured that it sounded that way when everybody was talking about, when both attorneys were talking tonight, it sounded like that was part of it.
It's part of negotiations, at one point, we, at, at one, well, it's part of negotiations. So at one point, the, the, the police department, this is before, um, police reform, wanted to get a captain, uh, started in the position in January, but again, the funding cycle is not January, it's, it's, it's July. But we were able to save on some other positions, be able to put the captain's position in there now, and I think the chief did a great presentation with Lieutenant Freyr on exactly why, what we need in the police department to be able to meet the standards and the conditions of, and the law of police reform by July that we're, we're, we're statutorily, uh, required to do. So, uh, wh- what goes on in negotiations has nothing to do with the finished product, it's just negotiations. That's, anytime you negotiate with anybody, there are things that come up, and there are many moving parts, and at the end of the day, uh, you come up with an agreement. And that's the agreement we have now. So whether the captain started now in July or start, uh, started now in January or February versus July, it was just a matter of timing, and that was all through negotiations, that's all. That's, it was, there was, there was never anything about that, it was just timing, and it had nothing to do with, we all know we needed a captain, it was just the timing of when the, the funding kicked in. But we had some vacancies, we turned that vacancies into a position for the next six months, and then it'll get fully funded, uh, in the budget. But tha- that's just part of negotia-, there were a lot of moving parts for negotiations. There was nothing that said, well, give us a captain or we're not gonna agree to it. That's, that's, that's not how the position got in there, we all agreed we needed a captain, it was a, it was a matter of, in fact, if you ask the union, the, the union bargaining group went back with a recommendation to the union, positively, under the old terms of it, it didn't get past muster, it didn't get a vote. We went back to the table, which is customary, it happens, you go back, they, they bargained fairly, and then you come back, and they, um, they were hundred percent unanimous. So you're talking about things that go on in negotiations versus the finished process.
Mr. Mayor, let me, uh, let me just intercede for a minute. Counsel Fieda, do you have any other, do you have any other questions?
Oh, I'm good for now, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you. Any other counselors that have any, any questions for, uh, um, the mayor, uh, Attorney Major, or the chief, or Officer, uh, Officer Freyr or Officer Preetti? Um, any, any other counselors have any questions at this time?
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yes.
Counselor Angelini?
Counselor Angelini, go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I really don't have any questions, but I, from where I sit, with the pending police reform at both the state and federal level influx, um, I'm really encouraged to have the parties before us this evening in agreement on something, uh, an issue as important as the captain's position, and we're gonna, we're gonna be inundated with this police reform that is gonna come down on us, unfunded, and I, I really believe that this is a monumental step in the right direction for the department, and it's gonna be fantastic for morale, and I, I think we should get this behind us before we have to start dealing with all these police reform issues. Uh, and I, I just wanna thank everyone for their participation, uh, this evening, you've all done a wonderful job, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Angelini. Uh, any, any other counsel have any questions or comments before I go to the public?
Counsel Dombrowski, Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yes.
I, I do have, um, another question, another comment. Um, I, I just did a quick, um, look onto maskgov.com, and I found that thirty-two out of three-hundred-and-fifty-one communities have taken their police chief, I think, out of civil service, I wanna make sure I've got that right, no longer under civil service, yes. Um, so, and I didn't see many urban areas, and I sure didn't see any gateway cities, so that's just, um, some information, I guess. And then I, you know, I go back and forth, I think, on the one hand, um, we have a lot of information that points in the direction that this is a good thing to do and a progressive thing to do for the city, you know, but on the other hand, I still have a lot of questions. You know, we're talking about police reform, you know, the mayor a moment ago mentioned that as of July one, we have certain obligations that we have to do because of police reform. I mean, I don't know what those are, and I think it would be helpful, certainly from my perspective, to have, um, that context in which to evaluate this. This is a very big step, and there are definitely pros to it, I understand that. Um, I just have some other questions, and from what I've seen, um, you know, just doing some initial research online, I don't see a big, um, overwhelming push to, um, by other cities, you know, cities like us, you know, cities that are urban centers, cities that are gateway cities, cities with diverse populations. If you look at the list, um, the communities that have done this, they don't look a lot like Lomester. So that, that's just a comment, and I appreciate it.
Uh, Mr., Ms. Ms. Shalfo Zephyr, can I just, can I just comment on that? Uh, Mr. Dombrowski, it's Brian Major?
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, thank you, yeah, I'm familiar with that, with the list you referred to, um, and th- that list of thirty-two towns is really for, uh, cities and towns, primarily towns, where they've exempted the entire department, uh, from civil service, where, where the town at some point in the past had enacted a chapter thirty-one. And I think if we're looking at the same list, it's a list that basically, you know, starts in the town of Acton, and it, it goes alphabetically all the way through the town of Williamstown, and those are, those are cities and towns where, in, in, say, the last five to six years, uh, whole departments have been removed from chapter thirty-one, not just specific positions. Um, and if you look at those individual statutes, i- if, if the chief and, and other higher-ranking, um, uh, positions are not referenced in the statute, uh, that is, that you can link to right on the website, well, then, th- those positions were already out of civil service to begin with. So really, that list over the last six years really provides that thirty-two, or roughly, you know, ten percent of, of cities and towns in Massachusetts have withdrawn completely from chapter thirty-one, uh, not, not just, um, not just your chief or your, your deputy or captain's positions.
Thank you, thank you for that, Mr. Major. Do you have-
Sure.
...of the, um, the cities that have taken the chief and the captains out, and not the entire department?
You know, I, I mean, again, not off the top of my head, but while we're on, I can do some, I can do some digging and see if I can pull something up.
I can't even think, of all the police departments that I've done arbitration work with, the only one I can think of is going on right now is, um, is, I think Worcester's trying to remove deputy chiefs out, and there was Fall River that's trying to move a captain's position out. Other than that, I can't think of any communities that I've worked with that are still in civil service. Most of them are either out of it already or they're, they're, they're about to get out of it. out of it. And that's for cities. Most of the towns have already gotten out of it for police chiefs.
Uh, Mr. President?
Thank you.
Dan Preetti, if I could?
Oh, who's this?
Dan Preetti.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Mr. Preetti, I'm sorry.
Um, just to clarify that question that was, uh, presented, I believe the city of Cranham has been removed, uh, the city of Pittsburgh's police chief is out of civil service, um, and I think it was mentioned the city of Marlborough as well, oh, and the city of Gardner, I believe, is in process.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, this is, yeah, this is, Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
I apologize again, it's Brian Mazur. Um, if, if, if I'm on, uh, you know, a, a mass.gov site that speaks to police chief's appointments that are subject to civil service, and there's, you know, a, a good handful of, of towns that are, uh, subject to civil service law, where the police chief appointments are subject to civil service, uh, Lester's, or, excuse me, Lemmonster, I, I apologize, is the first city that's, that's referenced. And then if you, if you look further on alphabetically, uh, the city of Lowell, um, their police chief is, uh, subject to civil service, and then if I look on further, uh, the city of Lynn, um, funny, I'm even north of bridge, let me see, I'm just really, the city of Pitts, the city of Pittsfield. Salem, Pinkberry, um, and I believe that that, and then, uh, Woburn has a city form of government, so Woburn as well, so Woburn, Lynn, Lowell, Lemmonster, um, based upon my quick little count there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, before I go to the public, is there any other councilors that have any questions at this time? Okay, hearing none, uh, let me go to members of the public. Is there any member of the public on the line that wishes to address the council either in favor of or against Communication 56?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, Officer Ken Leoni, the, uh, Patrolman Union President, how you doing, sir?
Um, well, how are you, Officer Leoni?
Very good. Um, couple of things, just, I might as well, uh, just, uh, jump on the, the recent topic about civil service. I don't, I'm, I'm hoping, maybe you guys remember, way back when, when we first started this, a little over a year ago, I, I actually created a, a spreadsheet that had the, uh, the 10 cities, uh, by population, larger and smaller than us, and I, I did the research. I'm sure maybe some of the numbers have changed, um, as far as civil service department versus a civil service chief. Um, what, what, uh, Mr. Mazur said is, is pretty close, most, most civil service towns, the chief is not civil service, they've removed the, the top position from civil service. Um, and however, in contrast, most, most departments, though, they're kind of second-tier of rank, whether it be deputy chief or captain, um, out of the 20 departments I polled, only three, again, of the bigger and smaller, had, had, that second tier was, was taken out of civil service. Um, a- as far as, like, I got a few, if, if you, uh, if that has any bearing on anything, but, um, and then, uh, when, the, 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 the union, our, the union's position is, you know, we, we wanna move forward, as, as, as the mayor said repeatedly, um, we, we do need to move forward, we've, we've needed to move forward for a long time now. Uh, for those that are familiar, I, I came from the lovely city of, of Amethel, and I know how things work there. Um, you know, that, that department was, had, had, had too many supervisors. I never thought I'd say this, but we, we have, we have too little. We, we, we have, you know, we are a growing department, we're a growing city, um, again, with, with the, uh, uh, reform, you know, looming, we're, we're getting, we're getting more, so we, we do need to move, move forward, um, with, with, with supervisory spots, um, sooner than later. The, the only really reservation we have, and, and this, this kinda came up during the last assessment test, um, was that we, we wanna make sure that, that it's a fair assessment, and that the assessment company that's actually administering the test has absolutely no ties to, to the, to us. Um, again, that was a question that was raised last time, as far as, um, you know, people who had ties to the assessment company, um, that there might have been some, some type of favoritism, or, or some other things that, that were going on, that, that weren't on, on the up and up, and that, that's pretty much our, our only, our only, um, thing that, that, that we are, you know, that, that might need to be addressed. Other than that, everything else seems, uh, to us, like, you know, that, that, again, we need to move forward.
No, I understand. Uh, thank you very much for, uh, for coming on the line tonight.
All right, thank you.
Is there, you're welcome. Is there any other member of the audience, uh, on the line tonight who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against Communication 56?
Uh, Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
This is, uh, Lieutenant John Frayer.
Uh, Lieutenant Frayer, how are you?
Good, thank you, how are you?
Good, good, uh, you have the floor, go ahead.
So, um, I just, I wanted to address, uh, a couple issues. Uh, the first one, uh, in reference to, uh, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr's, um, uh, last comments and, and questions, and, uh, I think one point that really needs to be, uh, stressed is, uh, she, she's correct, there's a lot of things that we do not know about, um, police reform, and this, uh, the new post that's, that's going into, uh, that's going into effect there, should, should already be in effect. I, I think, um, that, that emphasizes the need for flexibility within our department, and especially the, the, the people that are at the top running the department. Um, they need to, they need to be able, uh, they need to be people that can move and adjust to these changes as they come down, and by removing a position from civil service, you allow the city the flexibility of doing that. Uh, by putting somebody in under civil service, you know, that's, that's an appointment, like the mayor said, that could be 10, 15, 20 years, because they're afforded those civil service protections. Um, by removing it and going to that, that three-year appointment, then the city as a whole has an option to say, this chief isn't meeting our standards, this chief isn't, uh, uh, isn't moving at the pace, or, uh, following, following the, uh, the way that the reform is happening. So I think it, it gives more flexibility to the city, and, uh, to, uh, the residents, really, of the city, to, uh, make sure that they have the right person in the right position. And, um, also, one thing that I think that, um, shouldn't be overlooked is the fact that, uh, the police reform establishes certification for police officers. So those certifications, uh, come in three-year windows, and if you look at, uh, the majority of other states are already in post systems, I believe we were one of four or five that was, uh, that was not one. Uh, so if you look at the majority of those states, they have different levels of licenses, and, uh, Massachusetts hasn't enacted that, that part yet, that's gonna be left up to, uh, the, the committee and their own rules when it comes along, and that's the way it's handled in other states. But, uh, you know, in order to get these, these different licenses, they do put, provide in the law that they reserve the right to, uh, to interview for those licenses. So, um, chances are that, we, you know, when we, uh, make patrolmen, they're going to get, you know, what is commonly referred to as like a basic license. And, uh, as you move up in the, uh, in the rank system, those require, uh, higher-level licenses within most post boards, and I don't think any of us have any reason to believe that that wouldn't happen in Massachusetts. So if anything, uh, and this is kind of going towards, uh, one of the things that Counselor Corny was saying earlier, uh, I, I believe that is actually gonna be more, uh, pressure put on, uh, police chiefs, because they're going to have to, um, they're going to have to report to their, uh, the appointing authority, they're gonna, they're, they're going to work for the mayor, they're going to have to, uh, pass through city council, and they're gonna have to pass through posts. So, uh, if anything, um, you know, there, there's gonna be more pressures on those people to, to, uh, do the job the way that they should have. Uh, another thing that I think has been mentioned is the, the cost to the city. By removing these positions, I think you're gonna see a, a huge cost-effectiveness to the city. There's a reason that there hasn't been a written police chief test through civil service in 10 or 15 years, and they just won't run one. Uh, they are not cost-effective processes. Uh, being a person who's gone through multiple civil service examinations, I can tell you right now, in, in reforming civil service and changing the tests and updating them, this isn't new, this is something that, uh, they've been struggling to do for, you know, 20 years. Um, you know, when I took my test through civil service, I was being tested on outdated material that, I mean, uh, the crime scene book alone, you know, they, they were, they were testing me on standards of, of crime scene materials that haven't been used in 20 years. They're not, they're not, uh, updated in best practices. But then when we went to the assessment center, the assessment center is practical application of, of the, the things that you learn, and they are, they are fully geared towards what's happening in police now. So, uh, the assessment centers that, uh, we've been through, uh, the companies that do, uh, specimen center testing in and around here, uh, they would be, they would be testing us on practical application of today's standards. In, in Massachusetts, where, you know, it, where we currently are, also our policies and procedures, that we have here at the Lemmonster Police Department. So by, by moving towards that, I think, uh, in eliminating a lot of the, uh, the red tape that goes along with it, it's gonna be way more efficient and cost-effective. And, uh, that's pretty much it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much for that. Um, is there any other member of the public wishes to address the council either in favor of or against Communication 56? Okay, hearing none, um, I'll bring it back to the council. Um, any final, any final questions by any council, council members? Um, okay, uh, Mr. President, if you don't mind, if I do, um, a couple of, uh, minutes of, uh, subcommittee work?
No, please, go ahead.
All, all right, so, I, I'll just, I'll, I'll speak for myself, I, I've long had a, a problem with, with civil service in many respects. Um, and I, I tend to be in favor of this, um, of this communication. Um, my, my biggest problem, um, really is, is ignorance. Um, more about what the process will be going forward if this is eliminated, um, meaning if, if somebody asks me some pointed questions, um, on the, uh, at the supermarket, which is gonna happen Wednesday when I go shopping, um, you know, I, I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to answer them all, and, and I, and, and we have 10 further public hearings tonight, uh, nine of which I'll be chairing. Uh, you know, perhaps this should have been a special meeting, but for my, for me personally, I, I would like to continue the public hearings, um, solely for the benefit of getting more information, um, about the process going, going forward, um, how it would work. Um, that, that's, that, that's my feeling, I'm, I'm not, I'm not against this, uh, I, I just wanna learn more about, I, I do feel there's a need for change, I just wanna know more about how it would be going forward. Um, Counselor Zephyr, y- your thoughts on all of this?
Uh, I, I think that that's a prudent way to go, I agree with that. I, I am not opposed at all to this idea. I think somebody needs to mute themselves. Um, I'm not at all opposed to it, I think more information would be better. Um, I think we've learned, I have certainly learned, uh, a lot tonight, and it was very helpful having, uh, members from the department come and speak, which I very much appreciate, but I don't, I think more information would be better, I think it's a big change, and maybe a very good one for the city, but I think more, I, I'd like more information as well, thank you.
Yeah, and just, and just to further reiterate, if this were, if we had done this on an off night, which maybe that would have been better, um, but I, I, I have some other things I wanna bring up, some things I want clarification on, but like I said, uh, you know, we, I, I, I have nine additional public hearings tonight, and, and I wanna be able to do every, uh, Counselor Corny, your thoughts on this?
Well, you know, I, I'll just say this, ever since I've been on the, on the city council, uh, this has come, this isn't the first time that such a petition has come before us, and my reaction was absolutely, there is no way that I am supporting a petition like that. And I, I, I will tell you that, um, you know, I, I, I think police reform has, has changed this conversation. Um, I have had some conversation, you know, a- about this. Um, I, I will admit, I have not read the entire, uh, police reform, uh, bill, it's like 100 and something pages, and it's pretty dry, but, you know, a- after speaking to, to the people involved, I, I think my concerns that I've always had about something like this have been cleared up. We, we are, obviously, you know, the, the people that work in the police department, they know what they're getting into by getting out of civil service, that's very clear, I think. I don't think any of us could argue about that, given all their, their input and their responses in writing. My concern always was that we had a police chief that can work independently of the mayor and do his or her job without any repercussions or any influence, because they were protected. We all know how civil service protects a person in that position, and, but after, you know, you, you heard, uh, Lieutenant Frayer talk about the post, you, you need, you, you're gonna have, going forward, you're gonna have to have a license to do police work, you know, and you have to get a, a, uh, it's almost like driving a vehicle, you, you, you can drive a passenger vehicle, or you go to school and get your CDL if you wanna drive a bigger vehicle. That's how it's gonna be, um, you know, to do police work, you're gonna be a, a patrol officer, or you gotta go get a, a, a bigger license to become a captain or a chief, and, you know, I, I'm, I'm comfortable, I, I am comfortable that, that this is the way we need to move forward, and, I, I mean, I can respect that people need more information. Personally, I think we can just keep eating this dead horse more, more and more. I have enough information, I'm satisfied that the citizens of this city will be well-protected if we are out of civil service, and that the people that work for the, the, the department, this is what they want. So personally, I'm ready to close the public hearing, believe it or not, I can't believe I'm saying this, and move forward, I'm ready, but that's, just, I'm just one of three.
Co- Counselor Dombrowski, this, this is Council President Vedanza. You know, I, I understand, um, obviously, this is a significant move, uh, significant direction that's being requested, um, and I understand, obviously, information is important to anything like that. We do have five people on the line that I count, uh, tonight, and it doesn't mean they can't be assembled again, but, you know, I, I'm committed to, as far as I'm concerned, we can stay on this line a- as long as we need to. Um, while all these people are here, are there, are, are there any questions that any councilors or the committee has?
I, I gotta be honest, I, I've been, I've been taking notes the entire time, and, um, what I, what I'd like to do is be able to, um, put my, put my questions down, um, in a, in a logical order, perhaps assemble questions from other councilors, uh, get them to the mayor's office, and, and then, um, you know, have, have the picture put forward, um, in a clearer, uh, in a clearer perspective, this is my perspective. Um, yeah, I understand that there are people, there are people on the line, uh, based on the questions that, uh, are submitted, perhaps all those people don't, um, need to be on the line, but, um, I, is the, is this, if the agenda were lighter, I, I more likely would, unfortunately, that's not the case.
You, you, if this, if the recommendation is, uh, of the committee is going to be further time, I would, um, like some thought given to taking this into committee then, um, before the next meeting, if that's a possibility. But that's your call.
Um, I, I mean, I could, I could take it in, I could take it into committee, I, I don't know if there's a, a open meeting law concern, doing that with a public hearing still open.
Okay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yes.
Um, this is Dean.
Um, this is Dean. Um, is it possible that if you're gonna delay this, that, that, is it possible that if you're gonna delay this or continue it, that we could do this, or a special meeting next Monday night? And, and I think it would be helpful if we could get, uh, ask a couple of police chiefs, the concern seems to be, I think we, I personally think we've, for two hours, we've answered every question, and I, I can't even think of any more questions, but that's fine. Uh, but if we could get me the questions quick enough, and then I think it, it'd be helpful to hear from a couple of police chiefs who operate under the non-civil service status, so you get a feel for, you know, how they operate and what it's been to them. And I think, um, the chief in Pittsburgh is a very good example. I know that a number of our offices has, have personally spoken with him, um, about his experience, and that might enlighten, or at least maybe not answer particular questions, but might enlighten, um, you know, just hearing his presentation might li- lighten some concerns that some of the councils might have. But I'd hate to keep prolonging this. I mean, this is a historic moment in the sense that the union and the administration and the police union, the patrol union have all agreed on something. It's, it's, that's, that is something monumental and historic in the city, um, because it, it is a big decision, and so when you get all parties agreeing that this is the right thing to do, I, I don't wanna delay this anymore. I, I really want to get this, remember, after you, if you were to vote on this, we've still gotta get to the state reps, still gotta go home rule petition, and, um, and I really don't wanna wait any longer. I wanna get this moving so we have a permanent chief and a permanent captain, and those who, who, who are interested in taking the test can prepare themselves in whatever manner it might be. Um, so I would just ask respectfully if you could have a special meeting next Monday, um, you know, that would give us, I, I think everyone plenty of opportunity to submit their questions, and then maybe we can get a couple of chiefs, uh, I know the police chief and members of the union have a couple of chiefs that could ask, you know, to speak, uh, to the, to the city council about, you know, what has been, what their experience has been operating, um, without, you know, the, you know, without civil service.
Yeah, no, I, I have, uh, absolutely no objection to a special meeting. I, I honestly wish I had the foresight to, um, perhaps have asked the, uh, council president to schedule this for a special meeting, um, you know, but, and, and I understand everything you're saying, uh, but you guys have been living with this for quite a few months, if not, if not, if not a year, and, you know, we're just, we're just getting into the pool now. But I have no, I have no problem at all, uh, with a, with a special meeting, um, and council president, I'll throw that back to you, uh, what, what your feeling is on that.
We, we can acco- we can accommodate that, a hundred percent.
Um, and is, is next Monday, well, next Monday's fine with me. I don't, you know, that's good with everyone else?
Well, I have no objection to it.
All right, uh, so, the, the recommendation, uh, Mr. Mr. President, of the majority of legal affairs is to, uh, leave the public hearing open, um, and we're gonna be recommending further time with an anticipated special meeting of next Monday night. Uh, and I do wanna thank, uh, everybody for, for coming on the line. I wanna thank everyone for all the, um, all, all the insight and, and answering the questions. Um, I do think it's been productive, but, uh, from my perspective, it is, it is a big move, and I, I, I just wanna make sure I understand going forward how, how it's all gonna work. Uh, so, that, that would be that, Mr. President.
Okay.
Hi, this is Chief Kennedy. Just wanna quick, quick word. I, I tried to reach out to a couple chiefs, uh, to see if they could be available tonight. Um, mostly the, uh, would rather be, if they wanted to be contacted by phone instead of showing up for a Zoom, they should be greatly open to that, so I'm not sure if that's gonna change anything, how you guys want it.
Oh, that's fine. I, I think when the mayor, um, gets, gets the, uh, compiled list of questions, you can, you guys can decide how you wanna, um, proceed, and, and I think, uh, with a special meeting, uh, you'll, you'll probably be the only game in town, and, you know, if you wanna use that as a, um, as a forum to better, to better educate the public as well, then, then, you know, that's, that's probably even more beneficial.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. President, I think we can, um, move on to the next hearing.
Move on, okay. So, that'll take us to Chief, thank, thank you, Mayor.
I just wanna thank everybody, um, you know, for the, I, I mean, it is about vetting the discussion, and we're fine with that, and if there's anything that comes up between now and then, by all means, let us know, get us a list of questions, and, um, we'll be ready for next Monday.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council Dombrowski, that takes us to the, uh, C fifty-nine.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Communication Fifty-Nine, uh, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the city council review and accept the proposed intermunicipal agreement between the city of Leominster and town of Lancaster for the provision of water service. Um, I, is, uh, is, uh, Mr. Mayor, are you still on the line? No, okay, well, uh, this is, um, is, uh, intermunicipal agreement. I, I have read it. Um, I, it's, it's considered, it was drafted by a, a city attorney that's consistent with, um, the other agreement that we've, um, um, adopted, and I know that the water department, um, manager, uh, was in favor of this, that was the DPW. Um, Council Cormier, uh, Council Shalifus Zephyr, do you have any qu- questions or comments on this?
You know, I do, actually. I, I was, um, reading this once again this afternoon, and I do have several questions. In the intermunicipal agreement, it refers to Exhibit One, which is, um, it says it's incorporated, but it isn't, and that's the agreement between the property owner and the city of Leominster, which I imagine has all kinds of details in it that I'm interested in. Um, so, where is Exhibit One? Um, who is the owner of the property? Uh, where is the water coming from? This wasn't clear, and I know in the fall, we had conversations about this, and this is a follow-up agreement, but, um, it's not clear from this particular document that we have, is it, you know, is the water coming from Nottown? Is it coming from Fallbrook? I don't know where. And then also, um, I was curious, I wanna know what the rates are. You know, for selling a hundred thousand gallons of water to Lancaster every day, which can go up according to this, uh, document, you know, what are the rates that we're charging them, and also what are the connection fees? Um, and also, we did not get back a referral from the water department, um, or the treasurer, I guess according to my notes. So those are two more, um, uh, two more of my questions.
Okay, I thought we did get a referral back from the water department.
No, we got something from the DPW. Sorry, I didn't see anything from the water department specifically.
Oh, okay, I, I think I was taking the DPW and the water department to be, uh, one of the same. Um, all right, well, I think those are good, those are certainly good questions, but I, not sure I can answer them. Uh, Council Cormier, how about yourself?
Um, I, I do have a copy of the agreement here. I, I personally don't have any questions at this time on it.
Okay, um, uh, let me, is there, is there anybody on the line from the water department or the administration, um, relative to Communication Fifty-Nine? Okay, so, seeing none. Um, let me go to other members of the city council. Does anybody have any, um, comments or questions at this point?
Council Dombrowski, this is Council Frida.
Yes, Council Frida, go ahead.
I believe at the last meeting, I did ask, um, unless you're saving it for later, uh, why we went from, um, from one, um, why we went to an intermunicipal agreement? We had a memorandum of understanding, I believe, and then we went to an intermunicipal agreement. What, what changed for us to, to have to do that?
Yeah, I know, I remember you bringing that up. Um, I'm, I'm assuming it's the legality, but, uh, but go ahead.
No, I, I, I was thinking council president was gonna ask for something, and I can't remember, uh, who he was gonna ask. Cause I asked for it at the end of the meeting the last time.
All right, um, well, I'll, I'll, I'll keep, I'll keep that question in mind. Let me just ask if there's any other counselors who have any questions or, or comments at this point. Counselor? Hearing none. Uh, Council Angelina, go ahead.
Yes, if I may, um, Council Dombrowski, uh, Council of Shalifus Zephyr's question on where the water's coming from, if my memory serves, a question I posed to Mr. Brooks when he was on the line, uh, during that public hearing, and I believe he said it was primarily coming from the high system, which would be Haynes, Morris, and distributing reservoirs, but he did note that through the, a series of pumps that have been installed over the years, um, it's quite easy for water to be, uh, transported from one reservoir to another, so the, uh, the system's pretty well interconnected.
Okay. And I believe I, I believe I recall that, um, that touchstone.
And that's, that's all I had, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, any other counsel?
Council Dombrowski, uh, i- it should be noted that the agreement, um, was approved, um, at the council meeting that was held on November twenty-third by a nine to zero vote, and the agreement that I think Council David Cormier referred to, um, is the, is that agreement, which I believe is what's incorporated into this intermunicipal agreement.
Even the memorandum of understanding was approved in, in November.
Correct.
Right, right, right. Yeah, no, I understand that we're, we're, to some degree, we're re, um, almost, almost affirming this, reaffirming this.
This is Council Shalifus Zephyr. Um, Council Dombrowski, this is Council Shalifus Zephyr. I don't remember if the, um, the memo of, of agreement that was discussed back in November, you know, included references to a development agreement between the city and the property owner. I don't remember that, and I, I looked earlier today, uh, for my notes and wouldn't, uh, didn't find any notes, and certainly didn't find any old agreement. But there are a lot of specifics in this particular, uh, document that, um, I think, you know, I need more information in order to, um, you know, in, in order to go, to proceed for, to proceed with this. I think there's just a lot of questions.
Okay, I, I understand, I.
Okay, good.
Council Dombrowski, um, I, I understand that there's a, a number of questions, and obviously would have been better if we had someone on the line to answer some of these. Um, I will say for the record that the memorandum of understanding did in fact, um, include a development agreement, where certain types of development were prohibited, um, as a result of the, uh, quid pro quo for the water, and, which was, of course, sold at different rates to Lancaster. So, you know, I, I guess we, we need to get someone on the line.
Yeah, um, let me just, uh, complete the procedural process, and then we can deal with practicalities.
Very well.
Um, okay, I, I understand what everyone's saying. Any, anyone else have any questions or concerns from the council? Um, can we go to the public? Uh, yes.
Council Dombrowski, this is Council Frida. I just wanted to make two points, um, two good points that have benefited to the city. Um, there are many, um, residents of John Neapolse Lane that are gonna be able to hook up this, the water, and there's also one thing that we've always been concerned about with intermunicipal agreement, is that there's gonna be a shut-off at the line, uh, which we've always had an issue about being able to recruit funds if, um, if there was no payment. Now, there's, there's that, there's the ability to shut off, and I think that's incorporated in that agreement. So those are, those are two key provisions for us as well, trying to point those out.
Well, those are, those are good points to make. Um, any other counselor have any questions or comments? Um, okay, hearing none, let me just go to the public as I'm required to do. Uh, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against Communication Fifty-Nine? Second time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against Communication Fifty-Nine? Third and final time, does any member of the public wish to address the council, um, either in favor of or against Communication Fifty-Nine? Um, hearing none. Uh, Mr. President, if I could just do some quick subcommittee work?
Sure.
I, 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 I view this as a, as a, as a reaffirmation, um, and I personally think this is, uh, good for the, good for the city. I do think that, uh, Council Zephyr has, has brought up some good questions, so, and we probably should answer them and have somebody on the line. Um, I think, um, given the circumstances, this is something that could take ten minutes, uh, and perhaps we could make it part of the agenda on the special meeting. Um, Mr. President, I don't know how you feel about that.
I, I was gonna suggest the same, because the, the mayor will be on the line in any event for the other meeting, um, and I, I agree with you. I think once we have the right people in place, we can make quick work of this, and we have a ambitious, uh, schedule coming up for the next, uh, regular meeting, so I think adding this to the special meeting makes perfect sense.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Council Shalifus Zephyr, you wanna go with that?
I'm fine with that, thank you.
Okay, and then Council Cormier?
I also agree.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. President, I'm gonna ask that we leave the, uh, public hearing open and continue it to next Monday. Uh, we can take a vote at the time upon, uh, and the recommendation for legal affairs is gonna be further time.
Very well. Okay, we'll take that up under the regular calendar.
Mr. President?
Yes, Council Angelina.
Um, i- is it through the chair to the, to the chair, uh, through the president to the chair, I'm sorry. Could we ask the clerk to, to see if she can get Exhibit One that's missing, um, in advance of that meeting, so, or the chance to review it?
Yep, absolutely, you're in my mind. Uh, we'll make sure we take care of that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that suggestion, Council Angelina. Okay, um, all set, Council Dombrowski?
Uh, I am, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll now move on to the hearing on thirty-six dash twenty-one. Is the chairwoman of public service ready to proceed?
I am, Mr. President. Thirty-six dash twenty-one, National Grid in Verizon. Request to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Hill Street, National Grid will install one jointly owned pole on Hill Street, beginning at a point approximately six hundred and seventy-five feet south of the, of the center line of the intersection of Low Street, and continuing approximately sixteen feet in a westy, western direction. Installing a new pole, number twenty-seven dash eighty-four, with an anchor roughly twenty-seven feet from existing pole number twenty-seven, to allow for the anchor to sit approximately five feet away using a sidewalk fixture to stay in the public way. Pole number twenty-seven dash eighty-four is to help prevent pole number twenty-seven from leaning too far over. As everyone would recall, at the last meeting, uh, we had, um, we had some discussion with the neighbors, uh, there were some concerns, and we asked, uh, Mark Chapley to go back and, uh, talk to the neighborhood and try to work with everyone, which, uh, I'm happy to say that he did, um, and I will check with the clerk, but my understanding is that, um, we'll ultimately give this leave to withdraw, because they're all working together on this now.
Yes, we got a communication in, Council Frida, that, um, from National Grid requesting that we give this leave to withdraw without prejudice, so they can go back to the drawing board with the butters and, um, redraw it.
Right, um, so, um, I don't know, just, uh, protocol-wise, do we have to go to the public, or can we just close the hearing?
Well, it wouldn't hurt, just in case there's anybody who's on the line.
All right, um, let me, let me go to, let me go to my committee first, just to be sure if there's any questions or comments.
I, I have no questions or comments, uh, Council Frida, as long as, uh, National Grid is working with the neighbors, that's gotta stack reefs for me.
Okay, thank you.
Council Pauline, Council Pauline Cormier, I think it's great that they're working with the neighborhood, I have no issue.
Right, um, I will now, uh, go to the public. Is, is there anyone on the line that wishes to speak? Right. Um, I will now, uh, go to the public. Is, is there anyone on the line that wishes to speak for or against thirty-six dash twenty-one?
Yep, Mark Chapley here from National Grid.
I'm Mark, how are you?
How, how are you? Yep, um, so just to confirm, we did, uh, I did meet with the neighbors, and, um, we will be, um, replacing the pole and attempting to, uh, go with, replacing the pole with a, with an H, H-one class pole, and, um, we're going to be having a, an engineering study outside of myself, um, performed on this with, uh, some three-D modeling to ensure that the pole will continue to maintain, to be safe. And, um, if it is not, then I'll be working with the neighbors for one of the other three options that I could possibly do over there, and if we need to come back for another petition, I'll fill up paperwork, draw up a new drawing, and we'll put in for a new petition for this.
Okay, um, and again, I want to reiterate my thank you to you for taking the time to work with the neighbors. They've all lived there for some time, and I'm sure they don't want to be, um, they don't want to be upset with each other, and I think this is a great way, the, the way you handled it, so, thank you again for that. Is, is there anyone else that wishes to speak for or against thirty-six dash twenty-one? For the last time, is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against thirty-six dash twenty-one? Hearing none, Mr. President, um, I'd like to declare the hearing closed.
Very well. Thank you, Counselor Frida. Uh, we'll now move on to thirty-eight dash twenty-one.
Thirty-eight dash twenty-one, National Grid, request to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. National Street, National Grid will install one single owned pole on Marshall Street, beginning at a point approximately nine hundred and sixty feet northwest of the center line of the intersection of Main Street, and continuing approximately fifteen feet in a southwest direction. Install one sole owned pole with an anchor and transformer to be used to provide service to the MBTA. Um, again, Mark, are you still on the line?
Yes, I am. Um, so.
Okay, good.
Yep, so with this, um, the MBTA has requested, uh, that we give them some service. Um, they're redoing some of their, um, control houses along the tracks. Um, their intent is to place a pole on their, on the edge of their property or their right-of-way, um, whichever it is, and, um, we need to extend our primary down at a transformer, so that way we can send a service drop over to a pole that's going to belong to them, and they can then send the power down to their gatehouse or whichever it is that they're trying to do over there.
Okay. I did ride by there and, and don't really see much of an issue, um, but I missed something. So, um, uh, Counselor Chapley, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I'm all set with that, thank you.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Uh, no, no questions, I'm good.
Okay, um, is there anyone else on the line that would like to address the council regarding thirty-six, thirty-eight dash twenty-one? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against thirty-eight dash twenty-one? For the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against thirty-eight dash twenty-one? Hearing none, uh, Mr. President, I'll declare the hearing closed.
Thank you very much, Counselor Frida. Uh, now move on to the public hearing on forty dat, dash twenty-one. Uh, Counselor Dombrowski, ready to proceed?
I am. Uh, Mr. President, petition forty dash twenty-one, David R. Cormier, Ward Three Counselor. Request to install a stop sign on Lincoln Terrace against northbound drivers at Grand Street. Um, we did receive, uh, a referral back from the, from, uh, uh, the traffic agent, Officer Miko, um, giving favorable approval to petition forty dash twenty-one. Um, accordingly, I would be in favor of this. Uh, Counselor Zephyr, uh, do you have any, any questions or, or comments?
No, I don't. I, I, I'm in agreement.
Okay, uh, and Counselor Cormier, being the petitioner, I assume you're in agreement?
That is correct, thank you.
Okay, anything further you'd like to add?
Well, I'll just say the same for, for all of them, um, you know, I, um, a couple of weeks ago, our agenda seemed pretty light. I don't think we had any new communications or petitions, so I said, "Well, I'll throw some stop signs in, so we have something to talk about," and I guess that we got pretty busy the next week, but, um, in any event, um, I have been holding these for a while. They were some, uh, locations that I found that never had a, a, uh, ordinance or an actual stop sign. Um, I'm sure you'll be happy to know that I have about sixteen more. I will not be petitioning those. Those are on very small cul-de-sacs. So unless there are any new streets or developments built in the city, we accept any roads that are currently unaccepted. I don't believe I will ever be placing another stop sign in Ward Three after these five.
Thank you, Counselor Nostradamus.
Thank you. Any other, any other counselor have any questions or comments?
Yeah, Counselor. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Counselor Frida.
Through you, through you to the Ward Three Counselor, just a quick question. I'm assuming that the neighbors are all okay with these stop signs. I agree with all of them. Just assuming that the, the, the neighbors are all okay?
Well, we're having a public hearing. I don't hear anybody opposed. We'll hear in a minute if anybody wants to speak about them.
Well, that, that really wasn't my question, but I would, I would think that maybe somebody was, you would have talked to people up there when you did it. That, that was my question. Some people don't really know that this is happening, so, that's all. I'm, I'm assuming they're probably okay. I said I support it, but I'm just curious that the, the people don't all of a sudden call up and say, "How come this is here?" That's all. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Frida. Any other counselors have any questions or comments? Um, hearing none, I'll go to the public. Uh, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition forty dash twenty-one? Second time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition forty dash twenty-one? Third and final time, any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition forty dash twenty-one? Uh, hearing none, Mr. President, uh, you've already heard from my committee. Um, I, uh, recommend we close the public hearing, and our recommendation tonight would be to grant petition forty dash twenty-one.
Very well. Thank you, Counselor. We'll move on to forty-one dash twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition forty-one dash twenty-one, David R. Cormier, Ward Three Counselor. Request to install a stop sign on Hardy Drive against northbound drivers at Union Street. Um, we, again, we did get our referral back from the traffic agent of the Lumsford Police Department. Uh, he is in favor of petition forty-one dash twenty-one. I am also in favor of it. Uh, Counselor Shalaf Zephyr, your position?
No, I am as well. I'm surprised there isn't one there. It's a bad corner.
Okay, and, uh, Counselor Cormier, uh, I assume you're in favor as well?
That is correct, thank you.
Any other counselors wish to comment or have any questions regarding petition forty-two dash twenty-one? Hearing none, I'll go to the public. Does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition forty-two dash twenty-one? Second time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition forty-two dash twenty-one? Third and final time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition forty-two dash twenty-one? Hearing none, Mr. President, uh, my recommendation is we close the public hearing. Uh, the Legal Affairs Committee, uh, unanimously recommends passage of this, and we will do so when the council is.
Thank you, thank you, Chair, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we'll now move on to forty-two dash twenty-one.
Uh, petition forty-two dash twenty-one, David R. Cormier, Ward Three Counselor. Request to install a stop sign on Hardy Drive against westbound drivers at Pleasant Street. Uh, again, the traffic agent recommended in favor of this petition. I am also in favor. Counselor Shalaf Zephyr?
I agree.
And Counselor Cormier?
I also agree.
Um, I'll go to the other members of the city council. Does anybody have a question or comment regarding forty-two dash twenty-one? Hearing none, I'll go to the public. Does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Hearing none, Mr. President, we'd ask you to close the public hearing. Uh, the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee would be to grant petition forty-two dash twenty-one when the council.
That may be done, Mr. Chairman, and we'll now move on to forty-three dash twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition forty-three dash twenty-one, David R. Cormier, Ward Three Counselor. Request to install a stop sign on Francis Street against southeastbound drivers at Willard Street. Uh, similarly to the last three petitions, the traffic agent, uh, is in favor of this petition. I am also in favor of it. I'll go to my subcommittee, Counselor Shalaf Zephyr.
I agree.
And Counselor Cormier?
I also agree.
Uh, are there any members, other members of the city council that wish to, um, address the council relative to petition forty-three dash twenty-one? Hearing nobody, I'll go to the public. Does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition forty-three twenty-one? Second time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition forty-three dash twenty-one? Third and final time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of against petition forty-three dash twenty-one? Hearing none, uh, Mr. President, as is the case with the last three petitions, uh, we would ask that the public hearing be closed, and the Legal Affairs Committee will be recommending, um, approval of petition forty-three dash twenty-one when the council is.
That may be done, and mercifully, that takes us to forty-four dash twenty-one, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition forty-four dash twenty-one, David R. Cormier, Ward Three Counselor. Request to install a stop sign on Tucker Drive against eastbound drivers at New Lancaster Road. Uh, the traffic agent, uh, in his recommendation is in favor of petition forty-four dash twenty-one. I am also in favor of it. Uh, Counselor Shalaf Zephyr, your position?
I'm in favor of it as well.
And Counselor Cormier, as the author?
I am also in favor.
Does any other member of the city council, uh, wish to address the council relative to this petition? Hearing no one, I'll go to the public. Does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition forty-four dash twenty-one? Second time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition forty-four dash twenty-one? Third and final time, does any member of the public wish to address the, in favor of or against petition forty-four dash twenty-one? Hearing none, uh, Mr. President, we'd ask you to close the public hearing, and when the council is in session, the Legal Affairs Committee will be recommending passage of petition forty-four dash twenty-one.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, but your workout is not concluded. We now move on to thirty-two dash twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition thirty-two dash twenty-one, Elizabeth Wood, Planning and Economic Development Director, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the flood plain. Um, this is, um, this is a petition that's been back and forth several times, um, largely because of changes, um, at the state level and, and the hard work of the planning director and also, um, the Conservation, uh, Commission, um, in keeping up to date with this. Uh, so this is something that is necessary to pass as a matter, as a matter of law. Um, I spoke to the city clerk, um, earlier this evening. Um, we have not yet been sent, well, we have not yet been sent a clean copy, but that, that's more of a practical thing. Uh, we have been sent the bulk of it. The planning board did have their public hearing. They recommended, um, in favor of passing this. Um, I don't know if Elizabeth Wood is on the line?
I'm on the line.
Oh, you are, okay. Um, uh, Elizabeth, thank you for joining us. Uh, do you want to give us a quick summary of petition thirty-two dash twenty-one?
Sure, I, I don't, I really don't want to be redundant. Do you want me to just, uh, summarize it?
Well, if, if there's anything that I haven't addressed, you know, if you want to add to it.
I think that Counselor. I think the council has addressed everything previously.
God, God bless you for your brevity. Let me, um, uh, let me just do some, uh, does really, so my, 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 my position is I'm in favor of, of granting this. I just have a practical issue of whether we take this in the subcommittee and read the, um, clean copy, really for edits, um, or if we do that at the first reading of the ordinance level. Um, so I, I just, I, I don't really care either way, um, uh, so I just ask that my committee have the preference, Counselor Shalaf Zephyr?
I don't really have a preference. I guess I would suggest whatever's m- more convenient. You know, the first reading will be in a couple of weeks, is that right, if we pass it tonight?
Yes.
I.
Okay.
Um, I guess it depends on what that agenda looks like.
Well, I, I don't think there'll be a lot of, uh, a lot of, um, rant call over this one. Um, Counselor Cormier, your position on that?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, I, I just had a practical issue of whether, um, we take this in the subcommittee, read o- read over the final draft, um, of the ordinance for any edits, um, and, and then go back to the council, or we just do that at the first reading of the ordinance level and refer, report back to the council. I didn't know if you had a preference.
Um, well, I mean, if it, if it helps and saves us some time, I, I don't have any problem doing it, you know, at, at the first reading. I mean, as, as long as it's, as long as there's an appetite for, for the council to, to, um, pass some form of this and we're not wasting time and money by bringing it to a first reading, then I, I don't have any problem with, with doing it at the first reading, as, as long as we are gonna, uh, end up with some form of this passed, you know, at the end of the day.
Okay, I, I, I've read it already in, in its current, its current form with the, with the cross talk and what have you. I don't anticipate a lot of edits, but let me go to the other members of the council. Um, does anyone wish to weigh in on, um, what I've suggested so far? Okay, uh, hearing nobody, let me go to the public. Does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition thirty-two dash twenty-one? Uh, second time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition thirty-two dash twenty-one? Third and final time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of against petition thirty-two dash twenty-one? Um, hearing none, uh, Mr. President, um, I'll just do some quick subcommittee work. I, I think it's appropriate that we can, uh, close the public hearing, um, recommend passage of thirty-two dash twenty-one, and, um, take care of any edits at the first reading of the ordinance. Uh, Counselor Zephyr, you okay with that?
I am. I, I agree. I am, I, I agree with that.
And Counselor Cormier?
I also agree.
Okay, uh, Mr. President, uh, we, we, we would ask that the public hearing be closed. The council will be re- the Legal Affairs Subcommittee will be recommending passage of petition thirty-two dash twenty-one later this evening.
Very well, that may be done. Um, we'll now move on to the final public hearing of the evening, twenty-seven dash twenty-one, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition twenty-seven dash twenty-one, Elizabeth Wood, Economic Development and Planning Director, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to solar. Um, all right, Ms. Wood, are you still on the line?
I'm on the line.
Hey, thank you very much, uh, thank you very much, just, um, want to give us a quick summary on what you're changing from the former ordinance to now, uh, for the record, is that's okay?
Yes, the board reviewed the, um, are you mean from the original existing ordinance to what's-
Yeah, what do you, what do you, what do you change by way of this proposal?
Okay, I've also got Patrick Perler on the line, um, but I'll quickly tell you that the main goal of the edits that we, the planning board made were to make it more user-friendly, more customer, um, service-oriented for a residential, um, residentially-zoned lot to, um, install a on-site, um, or in, uh, on-ground, ground-mounted solar system and, um, keep, retain the strict rules that we had for commercial. That, that was the main point of this. And I've got Patrick Perler on the line, he did a lot of research, um, I believe he's here. Patrick, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Perler, uh, do you want to add to, um, what, uh, Ms. Wood had to say?
Thanks, Counselor Dombrowski. Just to say that, uh, our goal was to try to minimize the redundancy, uh, that was in the previous ordinance, streamline and make it more user-friendly, and to, um, just make sure we had some control in regards to the ground-mounted solar by asking that, uh, it be under a special permit as well as a site plan approval process, so that we could take a look at each individual case, um, to make sure that it belonged in any particular neighborhood, et cetera.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Counselor, uh, do you have any questions for Ms. Wood or Mr. Perler?
Um, you know what, I don't think I do, but I just want to confirm. I'm looking at the amended, um, table of uses, and I see the onsite solar, uh, solar system, um, special, you know, the, the table of, um, uses there, and is that the only change?
I believe there's additional-
Okay, so you're asking about the table of uses specifically?
I'm asking about the table of uses, but I'm also asking about the, um, the solar ordinance, um, the, you know, twenty-two dash one oh four solar ordinance. I'm looking through to see, um, I see there are a few things. Never mind, you know what, let me, I might have a few other questions, but go ahead, but-
Okay, uh, why don't I go on to Cormier, do you have any questions or comments?
I, I, I guess I'm just trying to understand how this amendment is gonna differ from what's there, from what we can, somebody is allowed to do currently.
Well, would you like me to answer that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Currently, um, a person in a residential district has to put in a security system, they have to build an access road, they have to put in a bunch of provisions that aren't necessarily, necessary for a residential site. But, um, they have to get engineered plans, um, that's a, an expensive burden on the property owner who just wants to save money. Um, usually their property owner is trying to save money by putting in the solar panel. We don't want to add expense or add, um, requirements that take, that, that cost some money to pay an engineer to do. Uh, we want to make it more user-friendly.
So, i- if, if I may just ask, is this gonna make it easier for people to stick ground-mounted solar panels in their yard?
Uh, it'll make it, they're gonna have to go to the planning board either way, but it's gonna make the process with the planning board a smooth road as opposed to a rocky road for a residential- Not, the commercial is still, still going to be, is just a stress. It's going to be more straightforward for a, a residential property owner.
Counselor Cormier, if I may, quickly?
Yes.
So, most people would use the roof-mounted option, because you cannot sell, there's a cap now on the size of the, um, uh, arrays that they can put on a roof. So, the Nat- National Grid, for instance, will not purchase back excess electric, uh, production. So, there's really no, um, there would be no reason for somebody to try to maximize some, their property and have all these solar panels on there as if they were going to make some kind of profit off of it. So, really, it's only in the instance that somebody's roof, for whatever reason, whether that be tree cover, uh, or, or bad positioning, or what have you, that they may have some other spot in the, on their property that would, uh, uh, better catch the sunlight just for them to be able to utilize that energy for their own residential use. So, the, if that alleviates some concern, because I can imagine, um, that if you look at it like somebody was trying to make some kind of, you know, profit and maximize solar panels on their property, uh, that's not something that, that can be done.
Right, no, I, I, I can certainly, you know, appreciate that explanation. I, I, you know, and I understand that they're not gonna be doing this by right, but, you know, if someone in a neighborhood doesn't get adequate sun on their, um, on their roof, but they get it up to certain of their yard, um, you know, wh- what's the criteria that the, the planning board is gonna use to say, yes, you can stick three solar panels over there, and now as a neighbor, uh, that's what I have to look at, you know, abutting, you know, my, my backyard in my property, you know, I, wh- what, I mean, I understand it, everybody's, every, every instance is gonna be different. I, I understand that, but, uh, how, how are you gonna do for one but not the other? What's all the criteria gonna be as far as what's somebody, what, what is gonna give somebody a favorable, um, you know, answer from the planning board versus saying, no, you can't do that? Is it gonna be simply, you know, what neighbors complain and, and, and what ones don't? Or, I mean, how's it gonna work? How, how are we gonna, how are we gonna, we gotta have some criteria?
Well, Elizabeth here, for a residential site, there is a requirement that you put in eight-foot fence around the solar panel. They're gonna be screened, and then there's a required setback of the solar panels from the site, or from the property line. But, um, honestly, this came before the city council, before it was approved. We didn't change anything except to make the process easier for residential. All of the other requirements are still in there. We didn't, we, we just reorganized the ordinance. We didn't, we didn't add in new requirements, or we just took out some requirements for residential.
Okay, so, so currently, you can't put ground-mounted, uh, solar panels in a residential neighborhood unless you have, unless you do all the things that you talked about a few minutes ago, like have a engineered plan, having, you know, all these things, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, I'm, I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, before I go to other councillors, I just want to tell you that I, there, there's, there's, there are quite a few changes here. I think that my, my preference, I mean, I'm about to take this in the subcommittee, um, and just go through all the edits. I, I appreciate everybody's hard work, and, and I, uh, I know it's a difficult subject, but, um, having said that, do any other councillors, um, have any questions or, or points to take it at this time?
I do, Counselor Dombrowski, Mark Bedanza.
Go ahead, Mr. President.
I'd just point out that th- there are a lot of language changes. I understand the spirit of what is trying to be accomplished here, but there are a lot of language changes to a very long ordinance. And one in particular is, I want to point out, is currently, if somebody wants to locate a g- ground-mounted solar system in the residential zone, they have to go before the planning board for a special permit, has, as has been indicated this evening. And they have to come in with a set of engineered plans. Um, this proposal would change that, and instead of coming in with engineered plans, they could come in with a plan that was written by a solar system installer. So, you know, for me, look, there are plenty of applications that there are gonna be problems in neighborhoods because those things no one wants to look at in their neighbor's yard. And if, in fact, the planning board is gonna entertain an application for a special permit to just do that, and I'm not saying there aren't applications where it would be appropriate because it can be properly screened and there's not a big enough lot, et cetera, et cetera. However, the, it's but one critical item that there's going to be in any kind of application like that is to make sure that they're voting on something that's precise, where the units are gonna be located, and that, in fact, they will be built when the special permit, if it is in fact granted, uh, that they'll be built in accordance with those plans. So, thi- this is complex, and this is gonna take some study, um, no question about it. And I am one, I'm not prepared to vote for something like this this evening.
Uh, any other councillor wish to adjust the council or have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll go to the public. Um, does any member of the public wish to address the council in favor of or against petition twenty-seven dash twenty-one? Second time, does any member of the public wish to address the council in favor of or against petition twenty-seven dash twenty-one? Third and final time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition twenty-seven dash twenty-one? Okay, hearing none, uh, Mr. President, if I could do some quick subcommittee work?
Very well.
Uh, I, I, I think, as I said earlier, there, there are a lot of changes. I appreciate the hard work, I really do, but I think for us to do this justice, I don't think there's need to keep the public hearing open. Um, I think that the Legal Affairs Subcommittee, um, needs to meet in subcommittee and go through, um, all of those language changes, make sure we're comfortable with that, and bring it back to the council, um, you know, and I'll, I'll go to, uh, Counselor Chalaposeph, your, your feeling?
Um, I think that's a good idea. I, I was, um, just kind of figuring out all of the different changes. I think, I think a, a subcommittee meeting, I think that's the way to, um, address this.
Okay, and, uh, Counselor, uh, David Cormier, your first?
Yeah, I, I certainly want to pick this apart a, a little bit more and, you know, be thorough with it because I, you know, I, I do appreciate all the hard work too, and, and, and believe me, I, I'm all for this kind of stuff, you know, clean energy, solar panels, wind turbines, whatever, but, um, you know, I, I don't want to create a circus in this city either. And I, you know, I mean, I just look out my own backyard, I mean, I, you know, there's a potential if my, if my neighbor got a special permit, I, I don't want to look at those things. Uh, they don't belong on the ground in, in a neighborhood, except maybe in certain circumstances, and I, I really want to make sure that we are, if this passes, we're gonna have very strong language that is gonna be, we're gonna be certain that they're gonna go in, 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 in residential areas that really are appropriate because, I mean, there are some that clearly are. I mean, you know, there's, I could name a million places where, yeah, it's not a big deal, but I could also name a lot of places where I, I don't think people want to look out so, out their window and see solar panels in their neighbor's backyard, so we definitely need more conversation. We need to fix this apart.
Okay, um, in, in seeing how this probably applies everywhere in the city, I'll give councillors one final, if they, you know, have anything else. Okay, hearing none, uh, Mr. President, um, our position would be to close the public hearing.
Very well.
And we'll schedule, uh, a subcommittee meeting later on, and the recommendation tonight would be further time, and I just want to thank, uh, Mr. Perler and, and Ms. Wood for all their hard work. Uh, I certainly understand the, uh, the intent of what they're trying to accomplish here, and hopefully we can assist in that, good luck.
Very well, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for, uh, thank you for all your efforts tonight. It's been a long night already, uh, and I, it's much appreciated, uh, in the committee as well. Um, okay, now we'll conduct the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. Is there any member of the public on the line which, who wishes to address the city council?
Hi, Mr. President?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Miss Daisy Alott and Stickler. I'd like to address agenda item C sixty-three, um, the request to establish the creation of a human rights commission.
Very well, you may proceed. Yeah, could you just give us your address, please?
Absolutely, I'm at one fourteen Blossom Street in Ward Five.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Hey, so, um, thank you. So, first and foremost, um, I just wanted to voice my excitement, um, at seeing this on the agenda. Um, I'm part of a group of Lemonster residents who have actually been, um, working on a proposal to create a human rights commission for the past, um, six to eight months. Um, we actually sent a letter to the mayor, um, this afternoon, um, and see the city council on it, um, and we really want to advocate particularly for this to be a community-led collaborative process. Um, and, you know, it's incredibly important, we've done, um, a lot of outreach to other municipalities that have human rights commissions, um, we've talked to commissioners, we've done, um, some research on how those, um, commissions operate, um, we've talked to community leaders, residents in Lemonster, um, and we really feel strongly that this needs to be a ground-up process, um, that is community-led. Um, so, we're proposing that we, um, put our letter out to the community. We're planning on doing that tomorrow, um, in order to get public support, um, community input, um, on what a human rights commission in Lemonster might look like, so that it really serves all of us here in Lemonster. Um, and we're really looking forward to working closely with the mayor's office, um, to build such a, a process so that it really is collaborative and community-driven. So, again, we really support this agenda item, and we're really excited to see it brought before the council, and we're really excited to, um, to collaborate on that, so that the whole community is represented. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you for coming on the line tonight. Um, is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the city council this evening in the public forum?
Hi, Mr. President?
Yes.
This is Emily Bradberg, um, and good evening. Um, I'm also wanting to speak about C sixty-three, um, and my address is- Um, I'm also wanting to speak about C sixty-three, um, and my address is...
Okay, if you'll just give us, yeah, go ahead, thank you.
Twenty-eight Ice House Road.
Okay, you may proceed.
Excellent, thank you. Um, I also am a part of the group that has been working on this proposal for a human rights commission, so we're very excited to see, uh, uh, someone bringing it to the table and bringing it to city council. Um, we started working on this when we, um, worked together to, uh, to organize the, um, Black Lives Matter rally over the summer in June, um, where we saw the mayor and we were really, um, really glad that we had, um, support at the leadership level of the city for that, and we were, have been working together since then to, uh, really capture the needs of the, this moment. Um, and so we just want to reiterate again the, what we think of, um, how important it is to collaborate with the community and, um, get support across the demographics, across, um, the different, um, groups that we have represented in town. Um, and we would really like to collaborate with the mayor's office to help make that a reality.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other member of the public, uh, that wishes to address the city council in the public forum this evening? The second time, is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the city council in the public forum this evening? And the third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council in the public forum? Hearing none, I'll close the public forum, and we are back in session, starting with communications from the mayor and C sixty-one.
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Um, C sixty-one, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request that an appropriation of five thousand five hundred dollars be made to the police salary wages account regarding to authorize establishment of a new captain's, uh, supervisory position submitted subsequent to the submission of the annual budget. Also, please note, we got a, um, follow-up on this communication, um, and we'll need to amend it just to say it's coming out of stabilization fund.
Okay. Um, C sixty-one is referred to the chairman of finance?
Thank you, Mr. President, first time on the calendar, regular course.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, wh- when did you want to entertain, um, the clerk's suggestion that this needs to be amended?
Um, we can do it, we can do it right now if you'd like.
Why, why don't we?
I can make a, a motion that we, um, we have it read, same amount to be, uh, transferred from the stabilization fund.
Okay, do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Council Pauline Cormier, seconds, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes to amend by vote of nine to zero, and that petition has, as amended, has been given a regular course. Moving on to C sixty.
C sixty, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request that the attached loan order be adopted, ordered that one million, one hundred, one thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars appropriated in addition to the eleven million, two hundred ninety-four thousand dollars previously appointed, appropriated by vote of the council on February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, for the purpose of financing costs of an erosion basin and secondary clarifier upgrade project.
C sixty is referred to the chairman of finance?
Thank you, Mr. President, once again, first time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C sixty has been given regular course, moving on to...
Council Bedanza?
Yes.
Can we establish the public hearing, please, for March twenty-second?
Oh, very well, sorry. Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, we have a proposed public hearing date on, uh, March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one at six forty-five P.M. Um, I would assume that your committee members are okay with that, Council Angelini?
It's fine with me.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yes.
You've heard the recommendation of legal affairs to establish a public hearing for March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one at six forty-five P.M. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, the public hearing established on C sixty for March twenty-second at six forty-five P.M. Moving on to C sixty-three.
C sixty-three, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request the city council establish the creation of a human rights commission for the city of Lemonster.
C sixty-three is referred to the chairman of legal affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, first time on the calendar, uh, regular course, referral, um, actually, there's, don't believe there's any need for any referrals, regular course.
All right, C sixty-three has been given regular course. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, starting with forty-five dash twenty-one.
Forty-five dash twenty-one, Gregory Sees Capitoline, purchasing agent, request to enter a five-year contract for personal property collection and valuation services.
Forty-five dash twenty-one is referred to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President, first time on the calendar, regular course.
Forty-five dash twenty-one has been given regular course, moving on to forty-six dash twenty-one.
Forty-six dash twenty-one, Gregory Lee, oh my goodness, I apologize, Gregory Sees Capitoline, purchasing agent, request to enter a five-year contract for certification of real estate value services.
Forty-six dash twenty-one is referred to the chairman of finance?
Regular course, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, forty-six dash twenty-one has been given regular course. Moving on to forty-seven dash twenty-one.
Forty-seven dash twenty-one, the botanist, seventeen seventy-five block drive, request change of use of seventeen seventy-five block drive from a registered medical marijuana dispensary to an adult-use marijuana facility engaged exclusively in product manufacturing on-site.
Forty-seven dash twenty-one is referred to the chairman of legal affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, first time on the calendar, regular course, with a referral to the economic development coordinator, the planning board director, and the building inspector. I'd also ask, Mr. President, that we vote to establish a public hearing, uh, for March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one at six thirty P.M.
Okay, forty-seven dash twenty-one has been given regular course, with referrals to the economic development director, the planning director, and the building inspector, with a recommended public hearing for March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one at six thirty P.M. Uh, all those in favor of the public, establishing the public hearing on March twenty-second?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Council Angelini, um, I must recuse myself, as I have done in the past with this project, I have, uh, a business relationship with a couple of the Butters.
Okay, very well, Council Angelini, your recusal is so noted.
Thank you.
Once again, um, the public hearing has been proposed for March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one at six thirty P.M. All those in favor of establishing the public hearing as proposed, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
By a vote of eight to zero, the public hearing has been established for March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one at six thirty P.M. Moving on to page six. And forty-eight dash twenty-one.
Forty-eight dash twenty-one, Eco ATM LLC, request to renew license to deal second-hand articles at eleven Jungle Road, Walmart number twenty-nine sixty-four.
Forty-eight dash twenty-one is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, first time on the agenda, regular course, and I believe that we have our referrals, and I would have no objection to forty-nine twenty-one to fifty-four twenty-one in block if anybody else doesn't.
I hear no objections. You may proceed.
Forty-nine dash twenty-one, Degon Inc., DBA, The New Stewlers, request to renew license to deal second-hand articles at one hundred Commercial Road Mall at Whitney Field. Fifty dash twenty-one, Diane Amadon, on behalf of upscale consignment, request to renew license to deal second-hand articles at eight seventy-five Merriam Avenue, um, site one thirty-one. Fifty-one dash twenty-one, Everything Cute Inc., doing business as Cute Teaks, request to renew license to deal second-hand articles at thirty-seven Minneticanic Street, seven four. Fifty-two dash twenty-one, Everything Cute Inc., doing business as Cute the Tooties, request to renew license to deal second-hand articles at ten twenty-one Central Street. Fifty-three dash twenty-one, Mason Investments Inc., renew bowling alley license for Mason Bowling Center located at six forty North Main Street. Fifty-four dash twenty-one, Christopher Revard, request to renew transient vendor license.
Thank you, uh...
Fifty, forty-nine dash twenty-one through fifty-four dash twenty-one are all referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, regular course for all of them, uh, and again, I believe we have all of our referrals.
Very well.
Thank you.
Um, forty-nine dash twenty-one through fifty-four dash twenty-one have been given regular course, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Moving on to matters before the city council, starting with the city of Lemonster financial report.
Thank you, Mr. President, we began the fiscal year on July one, twenty twenty, with fourteen million, one hundred eighty-nine thousand, one hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. We since added seven million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. Um, if tonight's appropriation is approved, uh, we will have spent with all of the other appropriations so far this fiscal year and, and including tonight, three million, nine hundred and eight thousand and five dollars, uh, leaving us with a balance of seventeen million, seven hundred and six thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Are there any questions on the financial report? Okay, we'll move on to matters under finance, starting with C fifty-eight, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes. Dash fifty-eight, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request an appropriation of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars be made to the election and registration capital outlay expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding the purchase of fifteen electronic poll pads. Uh, we have a letter here from the city clerk, and I'm gonna read it, it is fairly short, just gives a quick description of what we're doing at the polls. Um, I am respectfully requesting an additional appropriation of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars to order fifteen electronic poll pads for the fall municipal election. These poll pads will also be used to assist future election processes. Poll pads are an electronic voting device that allows voters to check in with the use of an electronic terminal. This lessens time, improves quality and efficiency, and helps to prevent contact time during, during voting. Due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, it is important to find new ways to minimize close contacts and the spread of the virus. These poll pads will ensure that occurs during election time. I am requesting fifteen poll pads, one for each precinct in the city. Um, there is a quote here attached, um, from a company out of Salem, New Hampshire, um, outlining, you know, each, uh, each one of these, and so this is definitely some newer technology, um, that will, are useful to the city, and, um, it would, by recommendation, that we should grant C dash fifty-eight, and I'll ask the members of the committee...
Um, Council Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
And Council Angelini? Council Angelini?
I'm in, I'm in, I'm in agreement with you, Mr. President.
Very well, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the finance committee to grant C fifty-eight, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, starting with Council Afryda?
Yay.
Council Dombrowski?
Yay.
Council Schalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Council Feckley?
Yay.
Council Angelini?
Yay.
Council Orninger?
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Council David Cormier?
Yay.
That shall be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero, C fifty-eight is granted, does the chairman have a, an order?
Yes, President ordered that the sum of twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars be made to the election and registration capital outlay expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund, move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard for the, the request for the adoption of the order, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the order, please say yea, yea?
Yay.
Anyone opposed? The order's been adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to page seven, and twenty-six dash twenty-one, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President, petition twenty-six dash twenty-one, um, Elizabeth Wood, economic development and planning director, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to lot frontage and adding a definition for paper streets. Um, we had several public hearings on this matter, um, my, my recommendation would be further time, uh, paper streets are a difficult concept, I'd like to take this in subcommittee, uh, along with the, uh, uh, the petition that would be coming up pretty soon. Uh, I just ask you to poll my committee to make sure they're okay with that.
Um, very well, Council Schalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
And Council Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the legal affairs committee to give twenty-six dash twenty-one further time, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of giving twenty-six dash twenty-one further time, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, twenty-six dash twenty-one has been given further time. We now move on to twenty-seven dash twenty-one, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President, petition twenty-seven dash twenty-one, Elizabeth Wood, economic development, planning director, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to solar. Uh, we had a public hearing that we closed this evening, um, the, um, a lot of, lot of good work done, um, by the economic development and planning director and, uh, also, uh, planning board member, uh, Mr. Perla. Um, there were a lot of language changes, and we're gonna ask that this be given further time, um, and we're gonna be scheduling a subcommittee meeting later in the evening. Uh, I believe my committee has already agreed to that, Mr. President.
That's correct. Um, you've heard the recommendation of the legal affairs committee to grant twenty-seven dash twenty-one further time, all, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, twenty-seven dash twenty-one has been given further time. Moving on to thirty-two dash twenty-one, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President, thirty-two dash twenty-one, Elizabeth Wood, planning and economic development director, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the flood claim. Uh, recommendation this evening is to grant petition thirty-two dash twenty-one. Uh, my subcommittee has already agreed to that, Mr. President, and will, uh, will make sure that prior to the first reading of the ordinance, um, we've carefully read the, uh, clean version, um, of the, uh, of the ordinance for any edits.
Very well. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the legal affairs committee to grant thirty-two dash twenty-one, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, starting with Council Afryda?
Yay.
Council Dombrowski?
Yay.
Council Schalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Council Feckley?
Yay.
Council Angelini?
Yay.
Council Orniger?
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Council David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yea, thirty-two dash twenty-one is granted by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to C fifty-six, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President, communication fifty-six, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request that the city council submit a request pursuant to Article three, Section eight, Paragraph one, Clause one of the amendments of the Constitution as amended by Article eighty-nine, that State Senator John Cronin and State Representative Mattelie Higgins file special legislation on behalf of the city, seeking to exempt the positions of police chief and police captain from the civil service law, general laws, Chapter thirty-one, as follows, enact exempting the positions of police chief and police captain in the city of Lemonster from the civil service law, being enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives in general court assembled, and by the, of the same as follows, Section one, positions of police chief and police captain in the city of Lemonster should be exempt from Chapter thirty-one of the statute, Clause, Section two, this act shall take effect upon passage. Uh, we had a public hearing this evening, um, we've agreed to schedule a public hearing, uh, as well as a special council meeting, um, next Monday, uh, the recommendation there for further time until the scheduled, um, special meeting of the city council. Uh, I anticipate sending my questions to the city clerk to get to the mayor's office, um, no later than Wednesday afternoon. Uh, any of my subcommittee men, subcommittee members, I would urge that they do the same thing as well... Any of my subcommittee members, I would urge that they do the same thing as well as the other of the council.
Anybody have any objections to starting the public, the special meeting at six P M? Okay.
No.
I think what I'm gonna do is recommend that the next item, C dash fifty-nine, which is the other item that we're gonna attach to the special meeting agenda, start at six o'clock. And therefore, I think C fifty-six, I'm gonna recommend, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, that we start C fifty-six at six fifteen.
That's perfectly, perfectly fine.
Okay. So, we need, we have a recommendation, I don't think it's unanimous, but I think we have a recommendation from Legal Affairs to grant C fifty-six further time and to continue the public hearing until March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, at six fifteen P M. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of giving C fifty-six further time and establishing that public hearing date, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, by vote of nine to zero, C fifty-six has been given further time with a new public hearing date of March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, at six fifteen P M. And Madam Chairwoman, you'll establish that agenda with me for next Monday, tomorrow sometime?
Do you mean me, Council President, to answer?
Yes.
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Sorry about that. Moving on to C fifty-nine. Is the Chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Communication fifty-nine. Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests that the City Council review and accept the proposed intermunicipal agreement between the City of Leominster and Town of Lancaster for the provision of water services. The recommendation is further time to March fifteenth, special meeting of the City Council, public hearing to be continued to six P M, as recommended by the President.
Very well. You've heard the, is, are your committee members okay with that? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
I am.
And Counselor David Cormier?
I am also okay with that.
Thank you, Counselor. You've heard the recommendation of Legal Affairs to grant C fifty-nine further time. Continue the public hearing to March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, at six P M, and establish the item on a special meeting agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of establishing the public hearing date and for further time, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? C fifty-nine has been given further time with a public hearing for March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, at six P M. Moving on to forty dash twenty-one. Is the Chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. This is an objection. I don't know if we can take C dash twenty-one through forty-four dash twenty-one in block.
Well, they're all, they're all ordinances, so I think we have to do a roll call vote on each and every one of them. But if you wanna read in, I suppose you could read in the committee recommendation on, in block on all of them, and then I can take the votes one at a time on each petition. That might save some time.
Okay.
Unless there's any objection that, that anybody has to that. Okay, you may proceed.
So, Mr. President, I'm gonna read each one, and then I'll give the committee, I'll go back, give the committee referral, and we'll do them one by one at that point.
Yep, that's, if you wanna just give me a blanket committee referral on, a position on all of them, after you've read them all, then I can take the votes one at a time. That'd be fine.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Petition forty dash twenty-one. David, Ward three Counselor, requests to install a petition forty-one dash twenty-one. David, Ward three Counselor, requests to install a stop sign on Hardy Drive against northbound drivers at Union Street. Petition forty-two dash twenty-one. David, Ward three Counselor, requests to install a stop sign on Hardy Drive against westbound drivers at Pleasant Street. Petition forty-three dash twenty-one. David, our four, Ward three Counselor, requests to install a stop sign on Francis Street against southeastbound drivers at Willard Street. Petition forty-four dash twenty-one. David, our Cormier, Ward three Counselor, requests to install a stop sign on Tucker Drive against eastbound drivers at New Lancaster Road. Mr. President, the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Subcommittee on each of these petitions, forty dash twenty-one through forty-four dash twenty-one, is to grant.
Very well. You've heard the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee on forty dash twenty-one through forty-four dash twenty-one. Does anybody have anything further? Okay, we'll start with forty dash twenty-one, which is a stop sign on Lincoln Terrace against northbound drivers at Graham Street. This will be by roll call, starting with Counselor Frida.
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger? Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
I shall be recorded as yay. Forty dash twenty-one has been granted by vote of nine to zero. Going on to forty-one dash twenty-one. Request install a stop sign on Hardy Drive against northbound drivers at Union Street, starting with Counselor Frida.
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Hey.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
That shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. Forty-one dash twenty-one is granted. Moving on to forty-two dash twenty-one. Request to install a stop sign on Hardy Drive against westbound drivers at Pleasant Street, starting with Counselor Frida.
Hey.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Hey.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
I shall be recorded as yay. Forty-two dash twenty-one is granted. Moving on to forty-three dash twenty-one. Request to install a stop sign on Francis Street against southeastbound drivers at Willard Street, starting with Counselor Frida.
Hey.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Hey.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Hey.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. Forty-three dash twenty-one is granted by a vote of forty, of nine to zero. Moving on to forty-four dash twenty-one. Request to install a stop sign on Tucker Drive against eastbound drivers at New Lancaster Road, starting with Counselor Frida.
Hey.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Hey.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Hey.
Counselor Feckley?
Hey.
Counselor Angelini?
Hey.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. Forty-four dash twenty-one is granted. Moving on to Public Service and petition thirty-six dash twenty-one. Is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Thirty-six dash twenty-one. National Grid in Verizon requests to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures belonging across the following public way. Hill Street, National Grid, will install one jointly owned pole on Hill Street, getting at a point approximately six hundred and seventy-five feet south of the center line of the intersection of Low Street, and continuing approximately sixteen feet in a western direction. Installing a new pole number twenty-seven dash eighty-four, and an anchor roughly twenty-seven feet from existing pole number twenty-seven, will allow for the anchor to set approximately five feet away using a sidewalk fixture, stay in the public way. Pole number twenty-seven dash eighty-four, to help prevent pole number twenty-seven from leaning far over. We had a public hearing tonight. We closed it. We heard from, from Mark Chapley from National Grid, and fortunately, everything is on its way to being worked out, so the recommendation would be leave to withdraw.
Okay, I'll check with your clerk, Counselor Feckley?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
And Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Public Service Committee to give thirty-six dash twenty-one leave to withdraw, and I assume that's without prejudice, Madam Chairwoman?
It is, I'm sorry, yep.
That's okay. Any further discussion on the request?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Yeah?
Even though there's really, we're not doing anything with this, I, I still need to abstain. It does involve my employer on this particular one. Thank you.
All right, your abstention is so noted, Counselor Cormier. That being done, is there any, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of giving thirty-six dash twenty-one leave to withdraw without prejudice, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Other than the abstention, is there any, anyone in opposition? Thirty-six dash twenty-one has been given leave to withdraw without prejudice by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to thirty-eight dash twenty-one. Is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am. Thirty-eight dash twenty-one. National Grid requests to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary and protecting fixtures belonging across the following public way. National Street, National Grid, will install one single owned pole on National Street, beginning at a point approximately nine hundred and sixty feet northwest of the center line of the intersection of Main Street and continuing approximately fifteen feet in a southwest direction. Install one sole owned pole with an anchor and transformer to be used to provide service to the MBTA. We had our public hearing tonight, and the recommendation would be to grant.
Very well. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Public Service Committee to grant thirty-eight dash twenty-one. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, starting with Counselor Frida.
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
I shall be recorded as yay. Thirty-eight dash twenty-one is granted by a vote of nine to zero. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Moving on to the City Property Committee. Is the Chairman ready to report on thirty-nine dash twenty-one?
I am indeed, Mr. President. Thirty-nine twenty-one. Richard M. Marshan requests to close off the following city street in city property in downtown Leominster to host the twenty-eighth annual Johnny Appleseed Arts and Cultural Festival. The festival will take place on Saturday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, with a rain date of Saturday, October second, twenty twenty-one. And we have the following streets. West Street from School Street to Main Street. Park Street from West Street intersection in the Church Street vicinity to Main Street. The City Hall parking lot. The city parking lot adjacent to City Hall located off West Street. The city parking lot defines spaces located between the First Baptist Church and the First Church Eucharium. Church Street from Marion Avenue to West Street. And then in parentheses, this section of Church Street to be closed off is still available with an altered egress pattern for public safety vehicles and business. The time of closure requested is from six o'clock in the morning until seven o'clock in the evening. Mr. Chairman, I'm also batting a thousand on referrals. We have a referral here from the Fire Department. Dear Miss Huffman, pursuant to your request
We're almost done.
Oops. All right, try again. Dear Miss Huffman, pursuant to your request for a recommendation on the above captioned petition, please be advised that I have no objections to the road closure and parking requests made in the above captioned petition for the festival on Saturday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, the rain date of Saturday, October first, two thousand twenty-one. Please contact this office if you have any questions. Sincerely, Robert A. Sidler II, Chief of Department. The second recommendation, referral that we received back was from Lieutenant Mark Amico, the Leominster Police Department. Hi, Caitlin. The police department has no issue with the downtown closing proposed for the annual Johnny Appleseed Arts and Cultural Festival in September. It appears to be the same street closing plan used in the past. Thank you again, Lieutenant Mark Amico. And finally, we have a referral from the mayor's office. Dear members of the City Council, in response to petition thirty-nine dash twenty-one, Richard M. Marshan requests to close off owing city street in city property in downtown Leominster to host the twenty-eighth annual Johnny Appleseed Arts and Cultural Festival. The festival will take place on Saturday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, with a rain date of Saturday, October second, twenty twenty-one. You go on to list the same street closures that I referenced in the last two. Please note that I am in favor of petition thirty-nine dash twenty-one. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact my office. Sincerely, Mayor Dean J. Mazzarella. My recommendation, Mr. Chairman, would be to grant, but I would ask you to poll my committee members at this time.
Very well, Counselor Dombrowski?
I'm in favor.
And Counselor Arndinger?
I'm in favor.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the City Property Committee to grant thirty-nine dash twenty-one. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, Counselor David Cormier?
You may proceed, Counselor Cormier.
Thank you very much. You know, I just want to, you know, congratulate former Ward Five Counselor Marshan, you know, for taking this on again for the twenty-eighth year, and hopefully, it can happen this year. You know, I, I think by then, everybody is going to need events like this, you know, for their sanity. It's been a long time. It's gonna be a great, great community event if it can happen, and, you know, I'm, I'm looking very much forward to it. You know, and hopefully, we won't be in a situation where, you know, we won't be able to gather. Obviously, this petition, we're, we're authorizing people to gather, so obviously, if it comes down to it, you know, the Health Department will have to get involved and see what, any guidelines are still in existence in September, but I certainly just wanna, you know, thank former Counselor Marshan for, for doing this every year. It certainly is a lot of work. I think this year more than ever, if it can happen, it will be very, very well received by the community, and I'm just being hopeful that it will happen, so, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. Thirty-nine dash twenty-one is granted. Moving on to Ways and Means, starting with the appointment of Nicholas Pervil. Is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests the appointment of Nicholas Pervil to the Board of Appeals, alternate member, term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-two. We had Mr. Pervil before us virtually on the phone this evening. He's a property owner in Leominster. He owns a landscaping business. He is dedicated to doing service within the community. He seems to be known by a number of our city councilors. Some of them called him a very analytical person. He seemed as though he would be a perfect fit for a position on the Board of Appeals, and I would recommend his appointment, and I would ask you to poll my committee.
Counselor Frida?
I support that.
And Counselor Dombrowski?
I agree.
Very well, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm the appointment of Nicholas Pervil to the Board of Appeals. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call vote. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Feckley.
Yay.
Counselor Angelini.
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. The appointment of Nicholas Pervil to the Board of Appeals is confirmed. Moving on to the Mayor's appointment of Lori Nelson to the Cultural Commission. Is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Uh, Dean J. Mazarello, Mayor, request the appointment of Lori Nelson to the Cultural Commission, term to expire April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. We also had Ms. Nelson, um, before us virtually this evening. Um, she is a self-defined artist and poet, and her resume certainly backs that up. She's very interested in growing cultural diversity in the city and has some, uh, very good ideas regarding, uh, the downtown area. Um, it's very obvious that she has passion and energy for culture and the arts, and I'm very pleased to recommend, um, her, uh, confirmation, and I will ask you to poll, uh, poll my committee.
Very well, Counselor Frida.
Yes, I agree.
And Counselor Dombrowski.
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm the appointment of Lori Nelson to the Cultural Commission. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done. This will be by roll call vote. Counselor Frida.
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Angelini.
Yay.
Sorry, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Feckley.
Yay.
Sorry, Counselor Angelini, I had you out of order there. Your turn.
Still yay.
Very well. Counselor Arndinger.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. Lori Nelson's appointment to the Cultural Commission is confirmed. Moving on to thirty-seven dash twenty-one, is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Uh, thirty-seven twenty-one, Susan Shalfo Zephyr. On behalf of Ginny's Helping Hand Inc., request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at fifty-two, uh, Mechanic Street. Uh, this is given left regular course last time. We had our referrals from the Treasurer and the Police Department and all as well. So my recommendation would be that the, uh, license is renewed, and I'll ask you to, uh, poll my committee.
Very well, Counselor Frida.
I agree.
And Counselor Dombrowski.
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant thirty-seven dash twenty-one. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, this is Counselor Shalfo Zephyr. I will be abstaining from the vote on this.
Okay, that's quite understandable. Thank you, Counselor. All right, this will be by roll call vote. Counselor Frida.
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Feckley.
Yay.
Counselor Angelini.
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of eight to zero with Counselor Shalfo Zephyr abstaining. Thirty-seven dash twenty-one has been granted. Moving on to page eleven. Anytime we get into double digits, we're in trouble.
Every- everybody's voice is dropping about two octaves there.
I noticed that, Counselor. That's a good observation. All right, on the new business, first reading of an ordinance, uh, twenty-five dash twenty-one. Is the Chairman of Legal Affairs ready to proceed?
I am, Mr. President. Petition twenty-five dash twenty-one, Elizabeth Wood, Economic Development and Planning Director. Request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to home modifications. Um, my recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll the committee.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
I agree.
And Counselor Cormier, David Cormier.
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant the first reading of the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done. This will be by roll call vote, starting with Counselor Frida.
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Feckley.
Yay.
Counselor Angelini.
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. The first reading of the ordinance is adopted. Moving on to thirty-three dash twenty-one. Is the Chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition thirty-three dash twenty-one, Gail Feckley, amend section thirteen dash seventy-seven stop signs of the Leominster Municipal Code by adding a stop sign for southeastbound traffic on Linda Street at Day Street. Uh, my recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
I agree.
And Counselor David Cormier.
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant the first reading of the ordinance for thirty-three dash twenty-one. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done. This will be by roll call vote. Counselor Frida.
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Feckley.
Yay.
Counselor Angelini.
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. The first reading of the ordinance is adopted. Moving on to thirty-four dash twenty-one. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yeah, Mr. President. Petition thirty-four dash twenty-one, Gail Feckley. Amend section thirteen dash seventy-seven stop signs of the Leominster Municipal Code by adding a stop sign for northwestbound traffic on Tina Street at Lincoln Street. My recommendation is to adopt the reading of the ordinance. I would ask that you please poll the committee.
Very well. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
I agree.
And Counselor David Cormier.
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant the first reading of the ordinance on thirty-four dash twenty-one. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done. This will be by roll call. Counselor Frida.
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Feckley.
Yay.
Counselor Angelini.
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. The first reading of the ordinance is adopted. Moving on to thirty-five dash twenty-one, is the Chairman ready to report?
Yeah, Mr. President. Petition thirty-five dash twenty-one, Gail Feckley. Amend section thirteen dash seventy-seven stop signs of the Leominster Municipal Code by adding a stop sign for southwestbound traffic on Tina Street at Linda Street. My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
I agree.
And Counselor David Cormier.
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the reading of the ordinance, uh, thirty-five dash twenty-one. Any further discussion? Hearing done. This will be by roll call. Counselor Frida.
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Feckley.
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger. And Counselor Angelini. Did it to you again. Counselor Angelini.
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. Thirty-five dash twenty-one. First reading is granted. Moving on to old business, second reading of an ordinance, starting with twenty-eight dash twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition twenty-eight dash twenty-one, Elizabeth Wood, Economic Development and Planning Director. Request to amend the zoning ordinance to provision for regulating commercial kitchens. My recommendation is we adopt the second reading of an ordinance, uh, and I ask you to poll my committee.
Well, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
I agree.
And Counselor Cormier, David Cormier.
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to grant the second reading of an ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done. This will be by roll call vote, starting with Counselor Frida.
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Feckley.
Yay.
Counselor Angelini.
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. The second reading of the ordinance is adopted. We have an item, um, as an update on five dash nineteen, Veterans Parking Sign, Previous Ordinance Update. I think the city clerk has something to share with us. Is that correct, um, Ms. Huffman?
Yes, Counselor, uh, Counselor President Bonita. So, I looked into this, and what happened was, originally, we did grant this ordinance, and it was subject to law to be put into legal form, and Attorney Riley contacted us back to inform us that the way it was worded, there is nothing enforceable about the ordinance. So if we were to put up the signs, there was no penalty for violators, and it wouldn't stand, um, I guess it wouldn't be enforceable. So if we wanted to go back and do this, we would need to redo the ordinance to make sure there was provision to ensure it was enforceable.
Counselor Frida, were you the, um, were you one of the authors or the author of this originally?
I was, I was the author. I, it wasn't written to even be enforceable. It was written to, it's just written even for courtesy. Um, you know, if there was a veteran sign up, I don't think there'd be too many people that would violate that. But I mean, we can rewrite it if we need to, but I think, I think we could just go with it as a courtesy, but-
Oh, I- I don't disagree with that. I- I think, you know, i- if it becomes a problem, um, there's nothing that would prevent us in the future from, you know, adopting an additional ordinance that required enforcement, but I- I tend to agree with you. I think if people see that, that- that the vast majority of people are gonna heed it.
I mean, they have two of them at Lowe's, and I've never seen anybody parked in there except, you know, somebody that gets out of the car with a, with an army cap on or some type of insignia, so I- I think there's enough respect for it. If there isn't, you're right, we can pack and- and make it stronger.
Okay, any- anybody, anybody else in the council have any- any objection to that process? Okay, let's see if we can move this forward that way. Um, if you need my help with that, Counselor Frida, just let me know, but, um, we're that the city clerk can reach out to the DPW as well as Mr. Riley and let him know what our desire is.
Sure. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Also on the old business, uh, Counselor Frida, I believe, uh, requested this. Um, we, um, are- are anticipating at the next meeting, starting the evening at six o'clock with an executive session, uh, we're in the city solicitor's office will be joining us to give us an update on the city's, um, litigation stance currently, uh, with a variety of matters that I'm sure are facing us. Um, so, um, you can expect to see that on our next agenda, uh, listed at six o'clock, uh, PM. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I- I, this is Counselor Frida, just, um, you know, I appreciate the fact that the clerk is, was able to put that together because I think it's pretty important that we see where we are, uh, litigation-wise, and we have a number of councilors on the council now that have never sat in to- to get an update on what's going on in the city. So I think it's, uh, advantageous to everybody.
Well, many, many years ago, Counselor, I actually gave those. In another lifetime. I actually gave those updates and briefings in another lifetime. It's a long time ago now.
Yeah.
But, uh, you're right.
I was in the school committee then.
Yeah, that's a few years ago, isn't it? Um, okay, anything else on the old business?
Mr. President.
Yes?
Uh, Counselor Dombrowski, I just need to establish a subcommittee meeting.
Okay.
Um, I could, I could do next Wednesday or Thursday. Um, I'm thinking, you know, earlier the better for me, but I'll concede to my subcommittee meeting members, Wednesday is St. Patrick's Day. I don't know if it matters to anybody.
But, uh- There is a pandemic going, so that might help, but I don't know.
Yeah. Uh, so, I- I'm thinking Wednesday, uh, I could do five-thirty, six o'clock, whatever works for the other two members.
Uh, this is Counselor Shalfo Zephyr. Five-thirty works for me on the seventeenth.
And Counselor Cormier.
That's- that's perfectly fine with me as well, Saturday.
Okay, sounds like we got a date. All right, anything else on the old business?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, just to clarify, the executive session, that's gonna be in the next regularly scheduled city council meeting?
Yes. Not- not the special meeting, the regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, thank you, I just-
Yep.
Wanted to clarify, thank you.
No problem. Always good to do that. Okay, um, that takes care of old business. We'll move on to the community calendar. Anybody have anything under the community calendar? Okay, the other, I noticed the- the other day that it was the fiftieth anniversary of the Ali Frazier fight, uh, back in nineteen seventy-one. I don't know about you folks, but I feel like I've just been through that a little bit myself last night, a long night. Um, if there's nothing in the community calendar, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I think I heard Counselor Arndinger first. Uh, do we have a second?
Second, David Cormier.
Counselor David Cormier, second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for all your help and attention. Have a good evening and a good week. Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone.